Welcome one, welcome all to our workshop on today, December 15. Honorable members of City Council, in accordance with the Virginia Beach Code, Section 2-21, Virginia Code 15.2-1413, and the city's continuity of government ordinance adopted on September 15, 2020, and Chapter 1289 of the 2020 Acts of Assembly as amended, and by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special meeting electronic communication means of the City of Virginia Beach City Council on Tuesday, December 15, 2020, at 12:00 p.m. The special meeting by electronic communication means will be held with virtual council members participating via audio and video conference. The purpose of this special meeting is to allow the council to hold a workshop regarding the terms listed in the published agenda. The City Council meeting will be streamed on VBgov.com and Facebook Live and will be recorded for rebroadcast on cable TV. Okay, Madam Clerk, at this point, if you can do the roll call.
Councilmember Abbott. Mayor Dyer.
Present.
Councilmember Henley. Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Moss.
Present.
Member Tower.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse. Member Wilson. Vice Mayor Wood. Councilmember Jones.
Aye, I'm here.
Councilmember Jones. So at this point, we'll just record 10 to 0. Mr. Jones is online, but he's not responding to the roll call.
Okay, thank you very much. And at this point, we'll recognize Mrs. Barnes, City Clerk, who will provide the meeting's structure and instructions.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. This is the City Clerk Amanda Barnes. Today's meeting is being conducted electronically and is allowed as described by Mayor Dyer during his reading of the call for special session. Also, please note the meeting is being recorded. To ensure this live electronic event is successful, please note the following meeting instructions should be followed. Speakers, presenters, please mute any additional devices you have in the room to avoid any unnecessary background noise and/or the possibility of echoing or reverberation. It is important that once recognized, please wait two to three seconds to begin to ensure council hears your complete remarks. Please begin your comments by identifying yourself. Also, do not ask, "Can you hear me?", as only one feet is open at a time to minimize the echo, and as such, you will be unable to hear a response. There are five topics or presentations listed on the agenda, including council discussion. At the conclusion of each presentation, the facilitator will open the conversation for questions seeking clarification by members of City Council. The goal is for City Council to engage in a quality conversation about these important topics. For that reason, the request is that comments and additional guidance be held until the facilitated discussion portion of the agenda. Councilmembers will be recognized in the order which they raise their virtual hand. It is important that councilmembers hold their comments until recognized. Also, it is helpful for councilmembers to ask all questions and end by stating you'll stand by for answers. This helps to ensure all questions are answered before I move on to the next councilmember. Lastly, please remember to lower your virtual hand at the conclusion of your remarks. Mayor and members of council, are there any questions about the process? If so, raise your virtual hand. Seeing none, thank you, and I'll turn the meeting over to Mayor Dyer.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Obviously, you know, this is considered an important meeting by many members of council. And unfortunately, with the governor's restrictions, we wanted to set the proper example to the public and then the safety of councilmembers to make sure we have to go through this process here. And, you know, it's a bit of a tedious process, but I think it's necessary at this point. But once again, you know, just in terms of things, we want to try to be fair. And if we're going to ask that, you know, during the presentations, if you just have need a point of clarification, that's okay. But if you hold all the other conversations to our discussions after, and then later in the discussions, if we could at least, you know, perhaps strive to, you know, be succinct and maybe hold to at least five minutes, so this way we can get more council interaction. But you'll certainly, after your presentation, be allowed to interact. But once again, we want to try to keep things moving. And we want to give adequate time to this because a lot of these discussions are essential to our future. But that being said, if we could try to at least be done by 5:30, because I have to go over to the school board meeting to honor, you know, you know, one of our great guys by the name of, oh, good gracious, Dan Edwards. Oh, my goodness, forgive me, I'm on Benadryl today. But anyway, so if we can proceed in that direction. And at this point, I'd like to recognize Mr. DeHaney going forward, and let's get the show on the road.
Mayor and members of council, good afternoon. And this will be a different process, but definitely, like we always do in 2020, we'll figure out a way through. At this time, Mary Jo will give a brief overview of what to be expected today in this virtual workshop.
Thank you so much. Hi, I'm Dr. Mary Jo Burchard, and it is my pleasure to be heading up the facilitated discussion. And just a reminder, this is our first time doing a virtual platform in this environment. And so, we want it to be as smooth as possible. And I am here to make sure that every voice gets captured and every concern gets heard. So what I'm going to do is walk through, we're going to be sharing the outline with you, and specifically, how the flow will happen. So from the beginning, after the city manager gives his entire report, there will be time for basic questions and simple clarifications. And requests for detailed clarifications, I will capture those, and they will be addressed in the Friday packet. That way, you will still have time to get those things addressed, but not in this session. Then, in the CARES Act, the entire presentation will be delivered, and then questions and clarifications will be captured and addressed by Kevin Chantelier, and requested actions will be captured and confirmed. Finally, we will be moving into the budget guidance. And again, the entire presentations will be delivered, after which, I will capture any questions and clarifications that are not really just quick little tweaks, to make sure that while they're front of mind, that they are covered, so that we will make sure that they're represented in the discussion. But we will hold the prolonged discussion for after the entire, all the presentations are given. So I will capture and confirm all of the questions. Then, for the stormwater referendum, the entire presentation will be delivered. Questions and clarifications will again be captured by me to make sure that there is time to discuss those. And then, requested actions will also be captured and confirmed. Then, we will move into the facilitated discussion. The facilitated discussion will primarily be with the objective of gaining a shared understanding of what needs to be clarified, what outline there needs, that all of the stakeholders need in order to move forward. So we will be making sure that everything, every person has equitable distribution of comments, and that if you have something that needs to be shared or addressed, that it gets covered. So with that, if there are any questions, if there aren't any questions, then we can move on to the agenda. Thank you.
Any questions?
Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody with a virtual hand raised.
Okay, at this point, I'll turn that over to Mr. DeHaney.
At this time, we're transitioning to the next presentation. At a previous council meeting, I was asked to share what I think are the priorities that we should focus on as a city. To do this, I used a one-page strategic plan tool that I had previously found successful to organize and demonstrate what I think are our key priorities. Regarding the one-page strategic plan, it is something that I would like to work on with council to focus staff's administrative work on achieving your vision for the City of Virginia Beach. I will discuss more about this process after the presentation. The priorities, strategies, and plans in these documents are based on my conversations and discussions with you all, and also what I have observed in my time here. Obviously, nothing in this document is set in stone or poured in concrete. It's likely that I missed some key points in preparing it. For this to be complete, council and I need to engage and have a robust conversation on strategic priorities prior to and during the retreat in February. Now, in keeping with Councilman Jones, now, in keeping with what Councilman Jones said to me, "Show us what you think we should be prioritizing. We may not like it, but I like to see it. Let us begin." Looking over at the mission and objective section, overall, I think our mission is to make Virginia Beach the best place to live, work, play, and to raise a family. In order to do this, I feel the city should focus continuously on getting better. We should intentionally measure what it is we are doing to ensure we are achieving the highest results. The first priority I feel that the city should have is developing 21st century infrastructure. We are a coastal city, and our future depends on building a flooding and sea level rise resilient community. As such, a major focus of ours should be on reducing flooding and adapting to sea level rise by accelerating flooding improvements through a bond referendum and securing a federal appropriation and official acknowledgements of our sea level rise strategy. We also have issues getting around town, whether it's traffic congestion or not having affordable or practical options for those who can't rely or don't want to rely on a car. As such, we need a safe, reliable, and accessible multimodal transportation network for all members of our community. It is prudent for us to evaluate new emerging mobility solutions and invest in efficient, user-friendly, safe, and cost-effective solutions that get people where they want to go. With the advent of ride shares, driverless vehicles, the rise in bicycling, teleworking, and obviously, our COVID-19 experience, how we commute is changing, and we need to do our due diligence and carefully vet investments in this field. Cybersecurity is also a vital component as it relates to our infrastructure. Our focus will be to implement technologies and solutions that manage multiple security capabilities and are able to predict and react effectively to changes in technology, business needs, and threat environments. And obviously, we must also proactively maintain our water, wastewater, road, and bridge infrastructure. Moving on to safe, healthy communities, which is, I think, is our second key strategy and priority. Those who live, work, and visit Virginia Beach are at the center of all that we do, which is why a safe and healthy community is highly ranked as one of our key priorities. To be a safe community, the city needs to quickly react to all safety hazards. For example, in reducing crime, we need to prioritize making technology investments in upgrading the police department's ability to quickly operationalize intelligence gathered from the patrol beat in the precincts, so that our command staff can more quickly pivot our response to changing realities in the field. Also, as we all know, we have to continue our efforts to prevent the spread of COVID-19 within the community, while also ensuring that the city workforce remains safe to deliver those vital services such as 911, waste management utilities. To be a healthy community, we need to ensure that we also provide equitable access to quality social services. Some key ways to do this is to provide and/or support initiatives that can connect those seeking social services with the support they need. For example, look at the work we are doing to help those who are in the criminal justice system due to opioid addiction. Our integrated approach works to get people the life-saving treatment they need and works to keep them out of the criminal justice system in the future. We need to continue this focus on targeting our social service resources where it's needed the most. Our third priority, I feel, is growing economic opportunities. Growing economic opportunities is critical to our success, so it is a vital priority area. We should focus on building Virginia Beach to compete in the regional, national, and global economy. Key to this is continuing our work at becoming a year-round coastal destination. As such, we should focus on cultivating and facilitating investment in strategic industries that pay a living wage, like defense, advanced manufacturing, subsea cable-related information technology, and avoid making public investments in low-wage sectors. Another focus area of growing our economy is to ensure that we have a responsive and proactive business climate. In particular, we must continue to ensure that the cost for doing business in our city is competitive, and that we are focused on improving the user experience with our regulatory responsibilities, like permitting, while still ensuring compliance. As previously mentioned, we are currently in the beginning stages of looking at our permitting process to identify areas for improvement. Also, we cannot grow our city if we're leaving people behind. It is important that we continue our work at implementing the disparity study recommendations and increasing SWAM business participation on city contracts. As such, I am taking a hard look at reforming how we procure. What I'm seeing is that we have a very decentralized model where procurement authority is dispersed too broadly. It will be difficult for us to achieve corporate goals like increasing SWAM participation if there's not appropriate centralization of how we spend valuable city dollars. Our fourth strategic priority is Virginia Beach's most distinguishing factor. It's our neighborhoods. Thriving neighborhoods are a hallmark to a great city. We are a community made up of distinct, complementary, and diverse neighborhoods. We are currently embarking on a process to update our comprehensive plan. With that plan, we must ensure that we strike the right balance of development in a way that maintains neighborhood character and livability. We may also want to consider pausing our work on that plan, which started prior to the pandemic, until after the vaccination process pans out. It's safe to say that some of the thoughts expressed as part of the plan revision process did not take into account a post-COVID-19 world, and community engagement is likely limited due to the pandemic. Another area of concern in thriving neighborhoods is housing. We all know housing in Virginia Beach is expensive. We need a strategy for facilitating what a diverse range of housing options is developed in our community based on our demographics and needs. Similar to our comprehensive plan, here, we must also ensure we balance this in tune with a neighborhood's identity. Access to good schools, parks, recreational activities, and libraries are also important hallmarks of thriving neighborhoods. As such, we must continue providing accessible, diverse, and inclusive recreational and library programs while appropriately funding the operation and capital needs of our schools. The last strategy is innovative and sustainable government. Our commitment to strengthening and expanding our ability to deliver innovative and sustainable government services rounds out our priorities. The breadth and quality of our service offerings is quintessential to our brand and reputation as a city. In addition, we must ensure that we go about our business of government in a fiscally sustainable way. In today's highly unpredictable financial and climate environment, fiscal sustainability matters more than ever. One of the ways that we will become a more innovative and sustainable government is through embracing technology, continuous improvement, and being willing to try new things. For example, I'm prioritizing setting up a performance management system here at the city that relies on data to improve results when deficiencies are identified. We are currently piloting this with the permit process. We currently have a high number of vacancies in the city. This may be an opportunity for us to use technology to do some of all, some or all of this work, and perhaps it's an opportunity for outsourcing rather than to continue with the legacy costs of doing this work in-house. There is also a need to improve our competitiveness and culture to attract, hire, and retain a diverse and skilled workforce. A good way to do this is to move forward with some of the recommendations in the Hilliard-Hines Report, such as centralizing our HR functions. COVID-19 has also shown us that in some areas of our government, teleworking and other flexible scheduling mechanisms can work. We must continue to vet these opportunities for inclusion in our recruitment and retention toolbox. Taking into account the events our workforce has faced over the past two years, when you think about the mass shooting on 531, the political and social unrest that occurred this year, and also COVID-19, our employees have been through a lot. We need to ensure that we have a workplace that provides a safe, upbeat, and enjoyable work experience. As such, instead of conducting our typical member survey this year, we're going to focus on doing a cultural survey of the organization. This will allow management to identify those areas where our culture is thriving and those where we might need to make changes. As mentioned previously, fiscal sustainability is vital. We need to do everything in our power to ensure we're tightening our belts operationally to keep our costs of service down to the maximum extent possible for our citizens. Lastly, for innovative and sustainable government, there's work needed on our part to more timely, meaningfully, conveniently, and appropriately engage the community on the matters that impact them. In particular, we need to come to an understanding with our community on the standard of acceptable engagement relating to land use and development, and continuing to enhance our community-police relationship. Regarding the one-page strategic plan that I mentioned previously, as I mentioned before, it is not poured in concrete, and I likely missed some key themes as it relates to your vision. Look at this as something for you, the council, to react to, and for us to begin a conversation. Next steps are for me, you, and the strategic planning facilitator to sit down and have a strategic discussion on the city's priorities. After our discussion, I'd like to report back out what I've heard and present a document that comprises that input for discussion at the February retreat. After the council has settled on a strategic path, I will begin working with staff to develop a detailed metrics to track progress and identify departmental ownership to accompany each strategy and its planned activities to present to council. From there, staff will regularly monitor our progress through monthly and quarterly performance management meetings and automated performance dashboards, which will also help to guide or redirect efforts when needed. This information will be reported out as transparently as possible as a way to keep ourselves accountable and to keep City Council and the public informed. With that, you want to go, Mary Jo? You want to facilitate for questions?
Councilmembers, are there any questions at this time? If so, raise your virtual hand. Actually, before we have questions, I'm going to ask Mr., see if we can get Mr. Jones to unmute his phone so we can record him as being present in the meeting. Mr. Jones?
Trying to unmute.
Councilmember Moss, if you'll pause two to three seconds before we begin your comments. Thank you.
Well, good morning, everyone. And thank you, Patrick, for a very nice summary. And for all my peers, I did share a private conversation, or email exchange with the city manager, and I won't go over all that here. But I do want to mention two things on strategies that I thought were not in key, well, not perfectly aligned with our last two retreats. One of our priorities was affordable government, and while it might be embedded in all the other things that are mentioned, I think it's worth being highlighted, at least for strategic communication with those whom we serve. And I do think, in the current climate, and rightfully so, we should have a strategy that deals and recognizes at a visible level, improving diversity and inclusivity, which might also be embedded in a number of those things, but it doesn't bring it up to the level, I think, which I think to move us forward, the community that we need to make sure it's not getting lost in metrics. But I don't like to offer ideas without offering the performance metrics as well. I think under metrics of affordable government, I think we need to, we could think of the real growth in median family income relative to the real growth in city spending would be a good metric to look at. Also, in terms of our job, really isn't to provide, providing services as a means, but the purpose of providing what we do is to increase the prosperity of our businesses and our families, and also the liberties that they can exercise because they have money to spend and go out and do things. So I think we, a performance metrics was, are we narrowing the gap between median family income and average household income? As you know, we have not a bigger gap as some communities, but definitely, it is, average family income is much higher than median families, being skewed by our disproportionate upper-income families, which is great, but it also understates just how expensive our city is for those below the median. And I think, under, if one thing, just to comment, Patrick, under plans and things, I think the media comes under innovation or sustainability. I think we might want to take a look or consider taking more risk in the short term on our resource allocations to make capital investments that have a longer-term revenue generation in order to maintain our competitiveness. So I think we need to understand that we have to balance services today against revenue to support services in the future. I don't think we've ever consciously looked at some of those things, and that gets to some of those road projects, Patrick, that D-Dot can't fund or are going to push out to the future. We may decide that some of those things are more important than other things in our CIP or in our operating budget, and we want to keep those road projects on track. But otherwise, I was very happy to hear your thoughtful insights, and I look forward to having a conversation on some of the things privately that we, that I posed in email as to your personal observation of the operation of the city, and thank you for the opportunity.
Councilmember Tower, if you would pause two to three seconds before we begin your comments. Thank you. Unmute your mic.
Madam Clerk, did you call on me? I'm sorry, my audio is not working.
Yes, sir. Please begin your comments or questions. Thank you.
My comments are twofold. One, I'm particularly interested in Mr. Moss's statement that he made. I missed the last part of his message, but I think particularly, we do need to focus on the investments, at least identify those that are necessary in the short term, and see if we can find a way to finance them, even if there's not the typical pay-go available from existing sources. And number two, I thought the city manager's presentation, his oral presentation, which he obviously had prepared in advance, was very interesting, and I hope he will make the full, his full remarks available to us to supplement the one-page summary, which I thought was useful, but I'd really like to have his full remarks as well at some point. Thanks.
Any additional comments or questions from councilmembers? Mr. Moss and Mr. Tower, if you could please lower your virtual hand. Mr. Moss and Mr. Tower, if you could please lower your virtual hand. Thank you. And any additional comments or questions by council members? If you would please raise your virtual hand, just let, and then we will recognize you. Mayor, at this time, no one else has their hand raised, their virtual hand raised.
Okay, should we transition to the next one? Okay. It'll take a couple minutes to do a little bit of a transmission here. Mr. DeHany?
That's correct, Mayor. Once we get the transition, then we'll get the next staff member to give the presentation to council. Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Kevin Chatalier, the Budget Director, will provide a summary on the CARES Act funding that's remaining, based on the previous authority that you provided to us as it relates to paying public safety payrolls to free up some general fund dollars that we can utilize in more advantageous ways in line with council's vision.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager. As the city manager just notified everybody, I'm Kevin Chatalier, Director, Budget and Management Services, and I'm presenting this to everybody remotely today. So this is a new venture for all of us in the new world of 2020 that we're living in. Today, I'm going to be providing two presentations. The first presentation is going, going to be a quick recap of the CARES Act presentation and reconciliation that provided City Council a couple of weeks ago. And then, at the conclusion of that, I'll then transition into a budget guidance presentation. So, next slide, please. One of the questions that was last asked whenever I was presenting this information to council was to provide a quick recap of the locally funded and administered programs and utilization of those programs. So as you can see on the table on this slide here, both the EDIP, as well as the Small Business Assistant Programs the City Council put into place, have both been expended and fully committed at this point in time. The Utility Relief Program that comprised of $2.4 million of the Water and Superfund and $1.6 million of general fund fund balance that was put into place by City Council at the beginning of the fiscal year FY21 and included in the reconciliation of that budget. There's been low utilization of that program to date, and as you can see, there's been $92,000 expended or committed to date. Another locally administered program that's seen somewhat lower than originally anticipated utilization is the Real Estate Tax Relief and Personal Property Tax Relief Programs. At the point in time when I last presented this information, due to low utilization, the application period and process had been actually closed. However, since that point in time, it's been opened back up, and they're now accepting applications for assistance in those programs just in time for the December real estate billing. The last row here reflects the $8 million the City Council provided United Way of Southampton Roads. There's an asterisk there next to it showing that the $8 million has been expended and committed. So it actually has been provided to United Way of Southampton Roads. In City Council's Friday packet, you received a report from United Way of Southampton Roads and their partner agencies reporting on the progress that's been made in the utilization of the resources to date. Subsequently that, we've been informed that with, from United Way, that the $2 million that had originally been allocated out of that plan for the purposes of providing fiscal relief has in fact, they're seeing demand for those services exceed the original $2 million allocated for that purpose, and likely they'll be fully expending all those resources soon, which will likely result in a briefing and a updated presentation in January to City Council, at which at that time, there might be, there's the possibility they might be requesting additional resources and funds to keep up with the demand, level of demand for services that they're seeing. Next slide, please. So this slide is just a quick recap of the action the City Council authorized the city manager to do at last Tuesday's City Council meeting, and this is just with the, in terms of reconciling the first allocation of the grant for, in swapping out unexpendanted resources for public safety salary reimbursement, which is an allowable use, and reconciling the grant prior to the December 30th deadline. Next slide, please. So there's a lot of information on this slide. If we were in person, I'd be able to use the laser pointer to direct in council members' eyes on the screen, but what I'm going to try to do is just narrate this. The box over to the left represents the first round allocation of the CARES Act funding. This is similar to what was presented to City Council just a couple of weeks ago of the original 39 million. It's estimated that $29.3 million of that will be expended with the remaining balance of 9.9 to be reconciled from the grant. There was a little change in this since last reporting this out, and so that's why I included it again. The change was reflected by the asterisk there, economic support. There was an additional round of small business financial relief that was awarded in that, through the application process by economic development, and so that's being reflected there. Up in the top right of this slide, this is just a quick recap of what City Council, the action they took whenever accepting and appropriating the second round of CARES Act allocation. You can see there, identified by the gray box or the gray row, that City Council allocated it for the purposes of seeking public safety payroll expenditures, allowing us to fully obligate those funds, and they established $39 million, $39.3 million local funding reserve, which is summarized in the box to the lower right. Since that point in time, City Council has taken two actions to date, authorizing, appropriating, and expending roughly 11, or no roughly, but $11.8 million from that reserve. Next slide, please. So this slide is just trying to capture that information from both those actions. So you can see at the top row, the $27.5 million from the second round CARES Act, the next row down, the $9.9 million from the reconciled grant closeout period. So in total, it's estimated that there is going to be $37.4 million in total pandemic relief funding available. So we had spoke about this before, or I noted this before. Even though the December 30th deadline is the federal cutoff, the pandemic is still underway. The city's going to have your additional needs to get to the year-end to allow for city services to be provided in a safe manner. So it's likely that there's going to be a need for city manager contingency reserve to be able to address those needs through the remainder of this fiscal year, such as personal PPE needs, enhanced cleaning efforts, additional economic support needs that were previously noted, but just weren't able to get executed by, before the December 30th timeline. So taking all that into account, there is a projected remaining total pandemic relief reserve of $31.4 million. So if I could just keep that number in council's mind, the $31.4 million, that's what I would like for council to keep in mind as a resource as we are walking through the budget guidance discussion and the possible, potential use of a portion of these reserves or these reserves to further any initiative that City Council would like to carry forward. Next slide, please. So again, being that it's local funding, City Council has additional flexibility without the restrictions that were in place, they're using CARES Act funding. Again, keeping in mind that the pandemic's not over. It is still ongoing. There is very promising news with the vaccine being approved and on the way. That could, there's light at the end of the tunnel, we're hopeful. But in terms of the, moving forward to the budget guidance portion of the presentation, the purpose for the CARES Act being in here is informational in nature for, so City Council can utilize this and be aware of this resource as they make this, have their discussion or make decisions regarding the budget guidance and stormwater bond referendum discussion. So before transitioning to the budget portion of the presentation, are there any questions or points of, points of clarification that I can make regarding the CARES Act funding?
At this time, Vice Mayor Wood has his virtual hand raised. Vice Mayor, if you would pause two to three seconds.
Yeah, thank you. I know that EMS is looking to start deployment of the vaccine imminently, you know, within, within the week or so, depending upon supplies and that sort of thing. So I'm wondering, I would assume that we could utilize the vac, the CARES Act funding to offset those expenses, and so I'll just stand by for the response.
Mr. Chatalier?
I'm sorry, I could barely hear the Vice Mayor in his question. Turned my volume all the way up. I hate to ask this, but...
The city manager will respond.
So the Vice Mayor's question was, could we use the, this pot of money to offset some of the costs associated with inoculating the EMS workers with the vaccine on the way? Yes, that's an option. I'm not sure if we necessarily even need this pot of money. I think we may already have that covered in, in the previous CARES Act, but I think we got that covered, Vice Mayor, but it is an option. And we are, as the Vice Mayor said, getting ready to receive our shipment, and we, I think we're getting enough to inoculate a certain portion of our EMS workforce at this time, but not, not a significant quantity as it relates to inoculating all the public safety workforce, but we think it's probably something that we can use for the EMS, the EMTs.
Councilmember Moss has his virtual hand raised. Councilmember Moss, if you would pause two to three seconds. Thank you.
I've asked this question before. I don't want it to be answered here, but it's a detailed question for the action list. I'd like to receive a list of the businesses and the amounts and the purpose for which we have dispersed the original allocation, and to what extent, or later, budget, budget guidance discussion. If we weren't hampered by the CARE Act rules to provide business relief, what do we believe the latent demand for relief is? Thank you.
Mr. Chatalier, sorry, Mr. Chatalier, did, were you able to hear Councilmember Moss's question, and if so, could you respond?
Yes, I was able to hear Councilmember Moss's question. We, I don't have a list at this point in time that I could share. However, we can certainly generate that list and be able to get that information. Along with that, we can also provide some of the criteria and guidelines, and I'm sure based on the criteria of the applicants, there was a cutoff point that resulted in every process to where individuals might not have qualified for a particular reason or component of the CARES Act guidelines that prevented them from receiving the, the assistance. Excuse me. So we can certainly work to gather that information and provide it for council's consideration.
And Councilmember Moss, to add to your question as well, I think we did send a report out for the, the CARES Act money that council gave to the United Way, that LISC, who's giving money to small businesses as well. I think their report talked about their needs and demand. Let me see if we can get more information from them to see what kind of businesses receive that money. And I say that, sir, because, you know, when we think about the latent demand that may be there, that weren't initially be able to cover it with our initial allocation, that was the reason why council specifically created that pot of funds, was to create a lower barrier of entry beyond what we were able to do as a government, you know? And from what I'm hearing, LISC, through a couple of conversations, have removed basically most of the barriers to allow that to be a low-barrier grant program. So we'll get more information as it relates to that as well, sir.
Councilmember Henley, if you would pause two to three seconds before we begin your comments. Thank you.
Yes, I want to clarify the issue of the real estate and personal property tax relief. I believe that you said that the action or that we took now has also clarified that we wanted it extended to the taxes that were due in December as well as in June. I actually had a citizen ask about this just yesterday, and I think there seems to need to be some clarification on that. Did we need to take specific action to make it apply to the December taxes? Because actually, I think the folks who have been most adversely affected by the pandemic are probably in a worse condition now than they were in June, and they certainly need it. So will it also apply to taxes that were due in June, that we have some funds available to, to not charge late fees and to also allow people to pay beyond the December 5th date?
Mr. Chatalier, if you would respond, please. Thank you.
Mrs. Henley, it's my understanding that we do not need a specific follow-up action requiring to, to change the parameters of the, of the legality of extending it to the December, the upcoming calendar year tax relief or real estate taxes. I believe it's just how the program was initially structured and set up in place at that point in time. I can certainly double-check and confirm with legal that in the reconciliation letter of City Council added that language, that it wasn't just binding to the last calendar year's taxes, but instead, the amount that was appropriated for that purposes in the current fiscal year can be utilized for that purpose, whether it's last year's tax bill or the upcoming tax bill.
Any other questions or comments from council members? If so, raise your virtual hand. And Ms. Henley, if you have additional comments, we will unmute you, but if not, if you'll lower your virtual hand, please. Ms. Henley, did you have additional comments? There's no other virtual hands. I'm sorry. Mr. Moss, did you have an additional question or comment? I see your virtual hand raised.
Yes, I do. I just wanted to compliment the city staff, you know, they took up on council's desire to see if we, with nonprofits couldn't be more effective in getting money out quicker to people that needed it. The good news is, they are. The bad news is, there's a lot more need out there, and so I do want to compliment, and I know Virginia Beach is unique in how we've approached that, but I do want to compliment Patrick and his team, and also the nonprofits. But I, I think we can see that there's more demand there through nonprofits than we could meet as a city. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Kevin Chatalier is going to pivot to the next presentation specifically about the budget guidance process. And I would add that, knowing that this is the first one, at least the first budget guidance presentation that I'm doing with council, that we be cognizant of, this is our first go at this and our first attempt at this, so definitely I'm interested in what we can do to improve the process for the remaining of the year, but also as we think about for the, the next coming fiscal years when we work together on establishing some kind of guidance before the manager presents to council the proposed budget. And basically, my goal is by having these conversations early and often, I can make sure I land in a, in a general ballpark for your reconciliation conversations in, in March. Thank you.
Mr. Chatalier, if you would just pause two to three seconds, you can, you can continue.
Okay. So now we're going to move to the budget guidance portion of the presentation. As City Council's aware, the budget process is a nine-month process. As city councils aware, the budget process is a nine-month process. We're about three months into that process, so we still have a ways to go. The idea is, as we continue to work these budget guidance meetings into the existing process, next slide, please. We're looking to try to treat it and act like it's a funnel. So this being the first meeting, the thinking is to try to get guidance and direction, as the city manager said, at a high level, to see if we're getting in on the same page with city council as we kick off the budget process and start doing an in-depth review of departmental needs. As we move forward into the February retreat, we're looking to get more detailed with budget guidance and direction that we're looking to receive from city council to help make those informed decisions. The third step of the process will include the city manager meeting with council members one-on-one to ensure that the ultimate proposed budget that comes out is, in fact, what city council intends for, sees as the needs within the community. And again, all the times we're working towards the goal of developing a balanced budget that best meets the needs of the public and the citizens of Virginia Beach. Next slide, please. So as with any budget, the process is really shaped based on the revenue estimates. Guiding our initial assumptions is that we're not assuming or anticipating any general government tax increase in our baseline revenue assumptions. Additionally, we intend to continue to review departmental fees for services or programs, as we typically do each budget process, to ensure that the programs and services being delivered and adequate revenues being generated through those programs to cover those costs. And just over the long term, typically, what's required of the city is, on average, about 3% growth to maintain services and operations on an annual basis. So over time, this just allows for the city to be able to keep up with the cost of inflation, fringe benefit increases over time, such as the VRS rate adjustments and compensation increases are typically the things that are the big budget drivers that require a good deal of, close to 3% revenue growth over time. Next slide, please. So back to the budget guidelines and some of the assumptions. Another baseline assumption we're making in our revenue is that we're looking to maintain existing city council's policies, which dedicate various revenue streams, be it the school funding formula and some of the other special revenue funds, such as TIP-TAP and Open Space. Here, for informational purposes, is a chart that includes, or a table that includes the various tax dedications through trustee taxes to multiple funds within the city. Next slide, please. So previously, I had noted that, over time, it's typically required that for the city to see a stay-level growth of about 3% overall to maintain current-level services and provide to be able to address needs as they arise. What this table here provides is a recap of the city's two largest revenue sources, locally-generated tax revenues of real estate and personal property. As you can see, the real estate tax rate is something that's fluctuated over the course of time. Back in 2004, it was $1.22 per $100 assessed value. Over the course of time, in the mid to late 2000s, when assessments were growing near 20%, city council made the decision to lower the tax rate to offset those increases in the assessments. And so they revised the tax rate down to a low of 89 cents per 100. Since that point in time, various actions have been taken by city council, raising the real estate tax rate and allocating that for specific purposes or dedications as city council determined were essential. Next slide, please. Looking at enterprise revenues, each year, as part of the budget process and review, we do a thorough review of enterprise fund revenues to ensure that the amount being generated within the revenue or the enterprise funds is adequate to maintain the assets and infrastructure of the enterprise fund. Specifically on this slide, at the top, you'll see mentioned the stormwater. So as our baseline revenue projections, we're assuming the continued plan of phasing in a 3.5 cent ERU rate increase each year of the period here through FY '25, '26. That's essential for the financing plan that's in place to support the existing stormwater CIP program. Looking at water and sewer, in our communication with them, they're not seeing a need to have a rate adjustment in the near future. Something we are going to look closer at, though, is the Waste Management Enterprise Fund. We're going to look closer and do a thorough evaluation of the revenues to ensure that there's adequate funding in place to properly maintain the assets or the vehicles that they have in place. Next slide, please. So this is a quick recap of the history of the revenue sources within the Waste Management Fund. So each bar here reflects a different source by a different color. So I just want to direct everybody's eyes to the blue portion of the bar chart going across. So this represents the Waste Management Fee within the Waste Management Enterprise Fund. It became an enterprise fund beginning in FY '14. And as an enterprise fund, the fund is supposed to be not reliant or dependent on the general fund for support or assistance. And the fund's been relatively stable on its own with the rate structure that's been in place over the course of time. With the exception of FY '16, '17, and '18, you'll see that there's some green portions of that bar. That represents additional contributions by the general fund, providing support to the Waste Management Fund. And that was the result of a financing plan that was adopted by city council at that point in time. There was a change in the SIPSA tipping fee, and it was a one-time change that was going to ultimately go away and back down, reducing the cost of the tipping fee. And as opposed to increasing the rate for the long term on the residential collection fee, city council opted to provide general fund fund balance to bridge that gap. Since that point in time, again, the Waste Management Fund has been fairly self-sustainable and not required an influx of general fund resources. In the current year, city council did take action to appropriate general fund fund balance and for the purposes of catching up fleet replacement and getting ahead to make sure that the vehicles are properly maintained and replaced. You can see that by that green bar there in FY '21. Next slide, please. The previous slide was the revenues. This is a visual of the expenditures by category within the Waste Management Fund. If I could just direct everybody's eyes to the pink portion of the bar going across. That portion of the bar and the numbers included on this slide represent the capital replacement, vehicle replacement cost within the Waste Management Fund that was budgeted each year. You can see that it's gone up over time. In FY '20, the Waste Management Fund achieved its optimal vehicle capitalization or replacement rate of two-point, or budget of $2.9 million. And in the current year, I previously know this, city council authorized a budget adjustment, providing additional $3.2 million to the current year's operating budget, so that the Waste Management Fund could catch up and get ahead of their vehicle replacement schedule. Next slide. So this is a one-page summary of the Waste Management Fund and the things we're going to continue to look and monitor as we review their operating budget in the coming months. So the monthly fee, it currently is $25 per month, which generates about $37.4 million per year within the CAFR. The unrestricted fund balance being reported for the Waste Management Enterprise Fund is $9.7 million. This is equal to about three months of their spend rate. The recapitalization goal is about $2.9 million, as I noted. Public Works and Waste Management Fund is currently budgeted at that or was originally budgeted at that in the current year. The goal is to get to a seven-year replacement cycle. However, they're currently replacing vehicles on about 11- to 15-year cycle. So they have the funds in place in the budget. It's just likely going to take time to get to that ultimate goal. The real things that we're going to be watching in the coming months are these next few things that we're referring to as budget drivers. So as an enterprise fund, the fund's entirely reliant on the amount of revenue that it generates to sustain its operations. The SIPSA tipping fee is the tipping fee that we pay to SIPSA for the disposal of tonnage at their disposal site. Currently, the tipping fee is $57 per ton. However, we've learned in communication with Public Works that there's a possibility for that to go up in January. We don't know what that will look like yet or be, but there is that possibility. Another thing that's acting as a budget driver right now is that Public Works is seeing an increase in the disposal tonnage of nearly 15%. This tonnage is obviously having to be hauled away by SIPSA, which is resulting in an increase in the tipping fee cost that the enterprise fund's having to pay out to SIPSA. So currently, the budget amount in the current year was 146,000 tons. That was anticipated, an expenditure at a cost of $8.3 million. This 15% increase could likely result in an increase of $1.2 million. Some other things that we're being mindful of and taking into consideration is also other cost increases. So as other decisions are made citywide, increases in personnel costs, fringe benefit rates, internal service fund, things of that nature also act as an expenditure increase that the enterprise fund must absorb within their existing resources. Next slide, please. So shifting from revenue to look at the baseline expenditures. So some of the baseline expenditures that we're using as initial budget guidance is the goal of maintaining existing programs and services that are currently being offered. We're also looking to maintain funding and the support in place for maintenance efforts of citywide assets and infrastructure. In the past, sometimes it's found that whenever there's a downturn in the economy, that localities will go towards the low-hanging fruit, if you will. Not saying that's not important, but sometimes those maintenance efforts are some of the easier things to make reductions to and see the least amount of immediate impact. Also, as we continue to work through the upcoming budget cycle, we're going to look to seek efficiencies where possible and possibly establish some performance standards at the direction of the city manager with various departments. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we've included in this discussion for the presentation is the discussion of compensation. Obviously, this would be pending any significant amount of economic recovery beyond, you know, what we were originally anticipating or seeing at this point in time. But we would like to be able to provide consideration to that should things improve. The consideration would be for compensation increase, possibly 2% to 3%. Obviously, that also taking into account any pending decision on the market salary survey and the findings from that and the decision to implement a portion of it or that, the survey findings themselves. Some other compensation-related initiatives that we would like to continue with our initial budget guidance is maintaining existing policies that are in place to address compression issues, something city council has worked very hard to address over the years. We'd also like to maintain existing workforce development programs, put in place for public safety departments. And something that we're mindful of and watching are the impacts of the minimum wage increase and the potential impact across multiple pay ranges within the city. Next slide, please. So shifting from the baseline guidance, that kind of between the revenues and expenditures, these are some, next few slides will include some key focus areas that we would like to focus on as we're looking to make budget decisions and allocate resources in the development of the FY '22 budget. As we typically do each year, we'll be looking to review CIP projects to ensure that the projects are, in fact, still in line with city council goals and priorities. We'll be looking to ensure that disparity study implementation is properly funded. We'll be prepared to further review and evaluate any gaps or where there might be and address potential needs. We'll also look at the short-term rental program to review and evaluate additional needs that might be in place. Initially, in the original proposed budget for FY '21, there were four FTEs that were included in the proposed budget. And as a result of the revised budget in the COVID-19 pandemic, those were actually removed ultimately prior to the adoption of the '21 budget. So we'll be looking to reevaluate that. We'll be looking to continue to support the newly-established Resort Management Office and further enhance initiatives outlined by city council under September 1 resolution. And also, keeping in mind, with the opening of the Burton Station, there's going to be a need to properly staff and outfit that facility with 30 firefighters and six EMS. There'll be a need to provide funding for those positions in the FY '22 operating budget. Next slide, please. Some additional focus area are the recommendations that were included in the Hillard Heinz Report. These are just some of the recommendations that were included in the original proposed operating budget. Again, that had to be eliminated as a result of the revised revenues from the COVID-19 pandemic. So we'll be looking to reevaluate these and figure out the best method to implement these and assess what the needs are and how to best approach this. Next slide, please. Another key focus area and a top priority of the city managers is to place emphasis and focus on police recruitment retention. Included on this slide, some additional information regarding a statewide initiative where they're looking to provide $7.5 million of one-time funding through the 599 Funding Program to localities for the purposes of enhancing and increasing recruitment retention of sworn personnel across the state. It's not known exactly what the portion of Virginia Beach's allocation of this is. However, we're looking to know that later this month. But what we would like to do is, once we get a sense of that and implement initiatives and look at, we would like to further fund those initiatives and look how to best expand those in FY '22 to enhance this effort and this focus. Next slide, please. And obviously, last but certainly not least, it's not lost the need to address stormwater needs and critical flooding needs, address critical flooding needs throughout the city. So subsequent portion of today's presentation are going to focus on citywide flood control needs and projects related to the possibility of a stormwater bond referendum. Also included within those presentations are going to be the exploration of possibly looking at alternative methods to deliver some of those projects to potentially accelerate the timeline, as well as looking to work with city council over the coming months and over the course of the next year to work on possibly putting together a bond referendum. And again, these portions of the stormwater discussion are going to happen and occur in greater detail in the next presentation and as well as the facilitated discussion, which will be near the end of the agenda today. Next slide. So capturing the information, so the slides noted pandemic relief reserve consideration. To date, there's been several discussions by council or mentions by council of possible uses of the CARES Act funding. For example, the CIP ditch and canal maintenance efforts. Also, keeping in mind, consideration that council has expressed interest in possibly looking at providing public defender supplements from the December 8 briefing the city council received, as well as a request from the Virginia Aquarium Foundation to utilize funding for the purposes of replacing kitchen equipment that was removed as a result of the pandemic. Next slide, please. So I guess, close to a month ago, I had presented to city council the five-year forecast. And included within the five-year forecast was a year-one deficit that was projected of close to $24.9 million. The purposes of the five-year forecast, as I noted in that time, at that point in time, we were being cautious and we were being conservative. And a good component of that deficit was being driven by a revenue reserve that we had put in place in anticipation of possible downturn of the revenues. by a revenue reserve that we had put in place in anticipation of possible downturn of the revenues. Um, also included within that baseline forecast was a three percent compensation increase that was also provided, which resulted in about twelve million dollars. So effectively, if both of those were to be removed from the baseline um budget, it would, in a sense, um eliminate uh the year one projected deficit. So I, I just put that out there to, to note um that of the twenty-four point nine that was shown in the five-year forecast, there was um some conservative um thinking that went into that uh with the thirteen point five million. So um, I just wanted to kind of crosswalk that. So in case city council has that number also um in their mind as what it is that we're trying to um crawl out of as we uh develop FY twenty-two operating budget. So at this point in time, I have a city council direction or um guidance slide. Um, and what I'd like to do is turn it over to Mary Jo for facilitation um and to be able to capture um any questions or that might need, that city council might need answered to provide additional clarity uh prior to moving on to the additional presentation included today.
So we have a council member that's already raised their virtual hand. Um, should I go ahead and recommend?
Great, sure.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Um, Councilmember Wilson, if you will pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments or questions, thank you.
Thank you, uh, very much, Kevin. Uh, notably speaking, especially me being a realtor, uh, notice that the prices in real estate are really going up significantly this year, uh, probably as much as we've seen in at least twelve to fifteen years. So I didn't know if y'all have been in touch with the real estate assessor's office to get an idea of citywide. I mean, I know it's mostly reflective in single-family detached houses, but citywide, I, do we have an idea of what the real estate assessments are going to be going up this year?
Mr. City Manager?
Um, Councilmember Wilson, we've spoken to the real estate assessor and he can neither confirm or deny, but he um indicated that he is seeing uh, he's, he is seeing something that there's a positive climb in real estate values, but I think he's waiting to get better assessment before he actually puts pen to paper or actually commits to something. But it sounds like that assessment is correct, Councilmember Wilson.
Just for clarification, um, we want to make sure that we have plenty of time for robust discussion of all these key things. So what we really want to do right now is, if I can capture any of your uh primary questions, then we will save them so that we could have as much time as possible for uh discussion. So I have the first one. Um, are we in touch with the real estate assessment first to find out if the assessments are going to go up? And um, but for anything else, are there any other questions that I can capture that we can include in the uh, the facilitated discussion? Or are there any, just if they're short clarifications, we can do them now. But if they are longer, I just want to capture them so that we can have as much time as possible.
Councilmember Moss, you'll pause two to three seconds before beginning.
My question deals with how are we going to address, how we're going to adjust the general fund reserve, which is now at twelve percent? Our guidance is eight to twelve and whether or not what every one percent reduction of, if we took the reserve to from twelve to eleven, how much cash does that generate? To make sure that we have a discussion on what's the general fund policy that we want to adopt. That's my question that I have for this, and that's the only one.
Any additional questions or comments from council members, or so raise your virtual hand to be recognized? And uh, Councilmember Wilson, your virtual hand is still up. If you have additional questions or comments, I'm happy to recognize you, you're unmuted.
I'm trying to figure how to lower it again, sorry.
Any additional questions or comments, just to raise your virtual hand? If not, we'll move on. If that's all at this point, thank you.
Great, thank you.
At this time, mayor and councils were getting ready to transition into the storm, um, into the stormwater bond referendum conversation. The presentation will be kicked off initially by David Bradley, who will give some opening remarks before Public Works staff will um take it from there. Also, a part of this presentation, we're going to have Alicia Pika, a consultant from Jacobs Engineering. Jacobs Engineering is currently doing an analysis on how we are currently delivering our stormwater infrastructure improvement work and also is looking at if for some, if a bond referendum is passed, if there's ways that we can look at different alternative project delivery mechanisms to expedite that as well as no bond referendum is passed, what we can do to expedite how we deliver our stormwater work at this time. David, please feel free to start the presentation.
Good afternoon, city council. Um, here we're again, it was a year ago, I think, when we gave a stormwater presentation and we've updated that. So uh, hopefully, this will be a good discussion for you if you go to the next slide for me. So uh, here is the agenda for today, probably takes about thirty minutes to get through. You'll hear some familiar voices and see some familiar faces. Uh, Tony Unback will be doing part of this as well as Philip Carter, who's serving as our acting public works director uh with Mark Johnson's retirement. Uh, Pa- Patriots will introduce Alicia, so she'll also give some background information on her. But I also want to introduce Katie James, who you'll be seeing at the end of this presentation. Katie, when, when Kevin became the budget director, um, we had to fill one of the uh administrator positions. What was interesting at that same time, Jonathan Hobbs, who was also one of the administrators, became the budget director in Chesapeake. So a compliment to our city that both of them became budget directors, but Katie James is one of the people that has filled those positions. And Regina Born Dagato also has filled one, so uh she won't be presenting today, but I'm sure you'll see her at a future presentation. So if you just go to the next slide for me, please. So we talked about this last year, uh, council can request a referendum by a simple majority, six votes. It has to be filed to the circuit court by August thirteenth, so we have some time. But as we know, that time can go quickly, so we got about eight or nine months here to kind of work through some details. Still, if the referendum passes, council's still going to have to take some action. They still have to uh approve the general obligation bonds and that requires eight votes, just like it does every year when you go through the CIP process. And council would also have to follow up with ordinances. Uh, they have to appropriate the money for the CIP projects and they'd have to uh increase the real estate tax rate if that's what uh would be the funding mechanism for it. Next slide, please. So as Kevin mentioned earlier, part of the presentation today is based on the fact that council's already approved rate increases for the stormwater fund. Uh, there's no further action that council has to take at this time. They're already codified, so to speak, and we would be basing anything uh today on the fact that that's already been approved. And our program for the next fiscal year right now would be about four hundred and ten million dollars. And once again, that assumes those rate increases are in place. So please go to the next slide. Something we've done a little differently this year as compared to last year is we've kind of broken the um, this presentation into tier one and tier two projects. The idea of being that the tier one is probably highest priority and those are the ones that we've been discussing with council in the past. We've changed a little bit around, but it's very similar to last year. Tier two, really, we're trying to give an idea for the citizens, okay, where do you belong? Are you going to be in a tier one, tier two? But at some point, uh, as we pay off our debt, we can now start addressing this second phase of projects. And these are projects that we're still trying to define, we're still doing modeling, or they might just be the second phases of the tier one projects. So uh, you know, wanted to give a little more detail and this will move, as we move forward over the next months, few months, we'll be getting more detail about the, the tier two projects as we get more information from some of our modeling. And before I turn this over to Tony, I don't want city council to think we came up with a perfect solution today. We put this together with the idea that there's going to need to be more conversation with city council over the next months. Uh, you'll see at the end of Katie's slides what we'll probably need from city council as far as guidance. But you know, we probably are going to need to come back every month and have conversations about this and fine tune it until council makes a decision of whether they would like to move forward with a stormwater bond r- referendum. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Tony.
Have with me today, Phil Pollin, the city engineer. Also have CJ Bodnar and Mike Monday. So these guys are going to be here to help me answer any technical questions you guys might have at the end. Next slide, please. I wanted to begin this afternoon by showing you these maps. They were developed as part of the sea level wise adaptation strategy. They were created using an economic flood risk model that identified average annualized losses across the city today and in the future with three feet sea level rise. The maps are showing the areas with the highest risk and the model determined that eighty-eight percent of the city's risk is concentrated in these areas shown in shades of yellow, orange, and red. And the projects that we are identifying in the tier one bond referendum concentrated in these very same areas. Next slide, please. So these are some assumptions that we've made um based on the projects we have. The adoption of the referendum will accelerate some projects. Uh, as was mentioned earlier, an alternative project delivery method uh will be considered at a later date. Several of the projects must be completed sequentially. And what I mean by that is that we have some projects that need to be constructed first. For example, the Bow Creek Stormwater Park, we need to provide storage before we can do all of the pipe projects in that neighborhood. And then impact on neighborhoods due to major construction activities is considered in our schedules. Because if you, as you've heard us say in the past, we do not want to go into a neighborhood and tear it up to replace all of the stormwater infrastructure at one time. Next slide, please. So these are the tier one proposed flood control projects. The first table represents projects that are currently in our capital improvement program, but they are not fully funded. So what we say is they have a balance to complete or a BTC. The first column is the project cost and you'll notice the additional funding needed to complete is not the same amount because as I mentioned, they're already in the CIP and are partially funded. The other thing I wanted to point out is the construction start date that you'll see on these tables. We are estimating that if the bond referendum passes, that the funding would be available July twenty twenty-two. It could be available sooner, but we want it to uh be consistent and use the starting point of July twenty twenty-two. So these estimated start dates are based on that. The next table are two projects that are fully funded in the current CIP, but the funding on these two projects are further out. So if we are able to get a bond referendum with additional funding, we could advance these two projects here. And you'll notice, these are the projects you're familiar with. They, Central Resort Projects, Eastern Shore Drive Projects, Princess Plaza, the Lakes, and Windsor Woods. Next slide, please. Next table are major flood control projects that have been identified in the southern watershed. Two of these projects were included in our proposed bond referendum list last year. And we've added a new one, the Stormwater Green Infrastructure Project. We have a project currently that we're working on in Back Bay for a marsh, marsh restoration. The next table are two projects that we have identified in the Lake Bradford, Chub Lake area. As you've heard me talk, we've been in, we've been working on a preliminary engineering analysis. We have identified uh several projects. But as I mentioned earlier, there are projects that must be constructed sequentially. These are two of those. Before we can do any improvements in Chub Lake and Lake Bradford, we need to build this outfall. You can see it has a very large price tag. And the next one, the Church Point Thurgood BNP, that needs to be done to provide additional storage in that area, similar to what we're doing in Princess Dam Plaza. Next slide, please. The next two projects are projects that have been identified from the Linkhorn Bay Master Plan. This is the first master plan that's been completed. We have a couple more projects that have also been identified and included as above target request in our CIP. The next table represents the sea level rise project in the southern watershed, the West Net Creek Bridge. And this project will construct a levee and a gate across West Net Creek. And this project actually replaced another project we had in the bond referendum last year. That was the Indian River Road Project. The Indian River Road Project was estimated to be forty-five million dollars. It was going to have to be a bridge. This project, if we were able to construct this, would eliminate the need to do anything at Indian River Road. So the total estimated bond referendum from the tier one projects, you see here in red, is four hundred and fifty-five million. Next slide, please. Now I'm going to move into the tier two flood control projects. And as David mentioned, these are the second phases of some projects and then also some, some new projects that are further out in our program. So the first table are the second phases of the projects that you saw in the first table of the tier one. Eastern Shore Drive, the Princess Dam Plaza, the Lakes and Windsor Woods. Most of these consist of the, the major storm drain pipe projects in those neighborhoods. And then the Lake Bradford, Chub Lake area, these are the additional projects that have been identified in that area according to our preliminary engineering analysis. Next slide, please. The next two are two additional flood control projects from that master plan that I just mentioned. And the last table are projects that have been unidentified. So just like the uh Linkhorn Bay Master Plan, you're creating master plans in each one of these watersheds, the Atlantic Ocean, Elizabeth River, Little Creek, Lynn Haven River, and Southern Rivers. Those master plans are in process, so as the projects are developed, we will add them into the list of projects, but right now, because we don't know what the projects are, these are estimated costs. So this number, oops, back one please, this number, three hundred and ten million, this, this number will definitely change and will increase because as you said, the projects haven't all been identified. Next slide. So the benefits of accelerating these projects, the projects will protect uh from a ten-year storm and these are, this is based on our current standards. So street flooding will be reduced in these neighborhoods. Currently, the neighborhoods are designed to accommodate a ten-year storm. In fact, most of them are even designed to accommodate a five-year storm. So advancing these projects, we will see protection against street flooding in neighborhoods and major arteries. It'll also provide a structure of flooding um protection from a hundred-year storm. And the next is a big one, um, protection against one and a half feet of sea level rise for a majority of the projects. This is one of the new requirements of Public Works Design Standards Manual. And then last but not least, a lot of the uh people who live in the recurrent flooding neighborhoods have very high flood insurance rates. When these projects are designed and constructed, they will be able to get a reduction in those rates. Next slide, please. So along with the costs of designing and constructing the projects, there are some operating budget impacts. They're related to uh additional resources that we're going to need to accelerate these projects. We're going to need six engineers, four construction inspectors, two right-of-way agents, and four and four contract specialists and administrative technicians. Table you see here is representing the costs if these were city full-time employees. If we were to resource this out to contractors, these costs would go up. Next slide. Now I'm going to turn it over to Lisha.
Thank you, Tony. I want to thank you for this opportunity to come speak to you today. On the next slide, I'm going to give you a little bit about who am I and why am I here talking to you? I am a professional engineer, civil engineer, and I have 28 years' experience. I have also been a former utility deputy director for a very large utility, a coastal utility in Florida, Palm Beach County. So I understand what it takes to run a utility like you guys are doing in Virginia Beach. For the past several years, I have been managing billion-dollar capital programs around the eastern part of the country and consulting with utilities about how to better implement and deliver their capital programs. I do a lot of engineer bond reports, so I coordinate a lot with finance in addition to engineering and operations. And I am with Jacobs Engineering, as David said. And right now, I'm one of their global technology leaders for planning. Next slide, please. So what we're doing, myself and Jacobs, is we're going to come in and just take a look at how are you able to deliver your stormwater program right now? And what are some opportunities that you could do to accelerate work or streamline it? The great news is that your staff has an excellent handle on what needs to be done. We just had a great presentation by Tony explaining what projects are needed, where they're needed, and why they're needed. So my role is not to question those. I think that you've already invested in that. You've already gotten that work identified. But I want to help have a conversation with you as a city council, as well as administration and public works and everyone else about how can we do a better job? What are, what are some other utilities finding successful? What are they finding that's not working? So our tasks kind of go from the bottom of this graphic up. We just recently started this work a matter of days, a week ago or weeks ago. And we're assessing how your program's been implemented in the past. What are the performance? How many projects were you able to deliver? What were some of the challenges? We're learning this by interviewing city staff and some of your consultants. You know, it's always nice to get an independent party. What do you think about the stormwater program and how it works? And then we're working with Tony and Phil to talk about how do we get those stormwater projects that are forecasted? Why do you need to get it done? And obviously, you already have a handle on the staffing needs and those type of things. But we want to bring in some new ideas about giving you greater flexibility to implement projects and taking a look at where are the critical bottlenecks? Where is the time crunch is coming? Where is it time, where's the time where it's taking a lot of extending the project schedules beyond maybe than what they have to be? So our final technical memo is going to have these results that are shown here on the right side of your screen. We want to talk about are there any inefficient procedures and processes? And just how those could be improved? Not necessarily replaced entirely, but just how they could be improved. Are there opportunities for enhancing the organization of your staff? Your staffing and how different groups and departments communicate with one another? What are the critical path activities that you're going to need to deliver those Tier One and Two projects that Tony just walked us through? So what are the things that we need to be on the forward-looking out for so that we don't get any delays beyond what we're anticipating? And then how can we better share information with you as a city council, as well as across departments in the city? Primarily between budget, finance, city management, as well as public works? We, we are, you've already heard a couple times about procurement strategies, such things like expediting the delivery through alternative strategies where we're using a different mechanism for completing the work. And resource allocation planning. And Tony just showed us that they're going to need more, more bodies to get a lot more work done. And then we want to leave you with some ability to track the progress of these improvements that we're going to recommend. How can we show if we're making any progress towards them? We won't solve everything immediately, but we want to be able to have some indicators that show you as a city council, we're moving in the right direction. Next slide, please. So we've done some work. Like I said, we've been working for a few weeks and we've, we've done the, we just got some data sets that we're taking a look at about as far as the getting into the core. But we have found, I would say, six preliminary findings that we want to spend some more time on in deliberating ones ourselves and then come back to you at your next retreat and give you a lot more robust information. But we have been very impressed with the level of understanding of your system needs. A lot of times I come into utilities to help and people are all over the place or they're not on the same page about what needs to be done. And you jumped across that hurdle. You have good documentation and you have a really strong staff that understands the work that needs to occur to improve your level of service for the stormwater. We found that a lot of some of the stormwater projects, their durations are taking longer than is average in the industry. And we want to look into that and find out why. And if there's opportunities to improve that, we want to help you implement those process enhancements. We also found that you haven't standardized a lot. Your staff don't have the tools and the software and the resources necessarily to standardize and streamline some of the work. They're still doing a great job of delivering projects and getting work done, but it could be a lot, could be done in a more efficient manner. And then number four there, you can see that, you know, stormwater group has had a lot of vacancies. And that's obviously going to affect your delivery capacity for work. On number five, I think we've had some really strong conversations with Kevin and budget. And we have some opportunities for streamlining funding and how projects are funded over time. And then the final one is we want to improve reporting internally and externally. So that people understand, you know, if they're going to approve this bond referendum, if you're going to ask them to, what's in it for them? Why, what's, why should they improve paying more of their money for infrastructure that they can't see that's primarily buried? Next slide, please. So our next steps is we're going to do our forensic analysis, and that's a data-driven. We're still having conversations and interviewing people virtually to get their perceptions, but we've done a lot of that work already. But we really want to dive into the data and get some data-driven metrics. And then we're going to provide you some recommendations on how you can expedite projects. Whether you get the referendum or not, we think there's opportunities for you to be able to improve your program delivery. And then we also are going to provide you some suggestions on, on actions that you can take to garner support for a, a bond referendum, if that's something that you're interested in pursuing. Do I have one more slide? I think that's it. So that's, that's all I have today, and I'm going to turn it back over to Philip.
Thank you, Lisha. My name is Philip Cutter. I'm currently the acting director of Public Works for the city. Good afternoon, mayor and council members. Go ahead, next slide, please. This slide was developed a few years ago and has been presented previously to council on a couple of occasions. And while there are a lot of numbers on this slide, I want to take an opportunity to draw attention just to you or a few of the items on it. On the left-hand side, we list our primary programs that show the major maintenance efforts that are currently funded in the capital improvement program. And also shown are the current fiscal, current funding levels in the current fiscal year and the estimated cycle time for those. What you will see in green is what we had looked, that staff has researched and developed estimated desired cycle times. And that's what we have prevented or presented to you previously. And then the following column, just to get to that, is the additional funding that we feel would be needed to get to that desired cycle time if we were operating under unrestricted funding times. We know that's not the case. So what we've also included in this chart is basically year or cycle times and the estimated funding to get to that particular cycle time. And you'll see that any of the ones that are the year and the cycle time, the funding matches what we desire, they will be shown in green. Okay, next slide, please. This slide basically just provides a summary of that. It shows the current cycle time for the program, the desired cycle time, and then the, the annual funding required to get to that. And this is additional funding to get to that cycle time. And you see the, the total annual need for the additional funding is $18.6 million for the current stormwater infrastructure that we have in place right now. Next slide, please. And what we also wanted to do so that we can give you a full picture is project out, as you'd seen, the, the improvements that are projected to be part of this bond referendum, $400-plus million. Well, if we install that infrastructure, we need to maintain it. So we wanted to give you an idea of what we're projecting the needs are to maintain that additional infrastructure. You'll see, this is for the Asheville Park home station, the North London Bridge, Sherwood Lakes. The ones that are listed are projected on, are projected, are listed on this slide. And then the next slide. What we also are doing, and what we did based off of this, is we estimated a maintenance need, an annual maintenance need of approximately 2% of the construction, of the cost. So therefore, based off of what we move forward with on future tiers, we can adjust that as we move forward, whether it's up or down. I've seen maintenance costs for future infrastructure could be as high as 5% to 10%. We kept it at a 2% and we, this is a, after all of it's installed, this would be the total cost for the Tier One, estimated total cost for the Tier One infrastructure maintenance needs in addition to the previous cost that we have shown. Okay, and that gives you the 9.25 million in additional funding. And that sums up the maintenance needs associated with the bond referendum and the current infrastructure. Now I'll go ahead and turn it over to Caitlin to talk about the funding scenarios.
Good afternoon, everyone. As Philip mentioned, I'm Caitlin James, and I'm one of the budget administrators with Budget Management Services. Next slide, please. So based on the flood control needs outlined by Tony and the current and future maintenance needs outlined by Philip, we developed a funding plan that will allow council to visualize the cost of each of these in terms of the real estate tax dedication. And to further provide flexibility and options, we modeled this on both 20-year and 10-year repayment terms. You'll see the 10-year terms on the following slide. For reference, the city generally issues general obligation bonds on 20-year terms. As you can see here, the debt service alone related to the referendum would equal about 3.9 cents of the real estate tax and resources to support the program. Those staffing needs that Tony mentioned would equal about 0.2 cents. Additional funding to get operations and maintenance on the desired cycles for our existing infrastructure would be 2.6 cents. And additional funding to support operations and maintenance of the new infrastructure related to the referendum would be 1.3 cents for a total eight cent dedication where you to fund all of those. It's important to note that this would be in addition to the existing two and a half cent real estate dedication as well as the stormwater U, stormwater ERU currently in place. These numbers are also based on an aggressive bond issuance schedule of $75 million a year for five years in a row and then $80 million in that sixth year. It's also based on a conservative interest rate of 3.5%. Next slide, please. So like I mentioned before, this slide is exactly the same as the previous. The only change to our assumptions is that these are based on a 10-year instead of 20-year repayment term. Under this scenario, the real estate dedication becomes six cents. And the total to fund all of these needs would be 10.1 cents. And Councilmember Moss recently provided us an analysis in which he determined a normalized dedication of eight cents to be necessary to support the referendum and the associated maintenance with the referendum-related projects. If we control for the 2.6 cents that we've added for existing operation and maintenance needs, our estimated dedication amount is in line with his at about seven and a half cents. Next slide, please. Those you all know and are familiar with, these are our current debt policies. They help us maintain our AAA bond rating. But just to remind you, they are annual debt service to general government expenditures. The city policy is not to exceed 10%. The next one is net debt to estimated value of taxable property, no greater than 3.5%. Net debt per capita, no greater than $3,000. And finally, net debt per capita to per capita personal income, no greater than 6.5%. Our rating agencies are primarily concerned with debt service as a percentage of general government expenditures as a metric. And they've also told us in the past that if we do forecast tripping any metric during our forecast period, they would like to see a plan to bring our metrics back under our established thresholds. Next slide, please. So similar to the funding models, we projected our debt metrics on both 20-year and 10-year bond repayment terms to give you an idea of the impact on the metrics in either scenario. Under the 20-year bond repayment term, the only metric that we trip is net debt per capita. But by FY27, we estimate that it will be back under our established threshold of $3,000. It's important to note that these are based on our currently adopted CIP program as well as those referendum-related bond issuances every year for six years, as well as a 3.5% interest rate. Next slide, please. Under a 10-year repayment term, we trip two metrics, debt service to general government expenditures as well as net debt per capita. But by 2030, we are back under the threshold for all four of our metrics. Just like the other one, this is based on our currently adopted CIP program. But as the FY22 CIP is further developed, as well as the assumptions related to this referendum, these metrics will be further updated and refined and will present them to council again at a later point in time. Next slide, please. So as David mentioned, this referendum does not address those Tier Two projects or most sea level rise projects in the city. But as the debt is retired, the capacity can and will be used to address future projects across the city. And again, this presentation is a starting point between staff, council, and our financial advisors for about the next eight months until a final decision is made this summer before that August 13th deadline. Next slide, please. And ultimately, we're going to need direction from city council on several policy decisions to include the total referendum amount and what projects you wish to include, the total real estate dedication amount to support the program, various financing choices to include the term of bonds, the assumed issuance schedule, as well as our assumed interest rate. And whether or not you're comfortable with our current metric policies. And that's everything. I'm going to turn it back over to Mary Jo and the city manager.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that wonderful presentation. At this point, I would like any simple clarification questions to be directed to the presenters. And anything that is highly detailed that we want to make sure that we capture for the full discussion, I will capture here. So with that, I'll give it over to the clerk.
Councilmembers, I have Councilmember Berluci and Councilmember Moss. Mr. Berluci, if you'd like to begin your comments, just pause two to three seconds.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone for that very detailed and very comprehensive presentation. And it was very illuminating, and I'm grateful for all the expertise and dedication that you put into it. I was really, you're very enthused by what appears to be a potential for acceleration in flood control projects. And I think that's something that Virginia Beach residents have asked for and are very interested in. But one thing that I noted that didn't seem to be present in the discussions about how the flooding scenario could be improved in Virginia Beach as a result of having increased funding through approval by a bond referendum is in the area of maintenance and operations, really maintenance. And, and I, and I think that's something that potentially, I guess I have a question. Was that considered when, when the variety of options were discussed about what mitigation efforts could be employed as a result of an infusion of, of revenue? And because I think that, you know, one thing that I hear a lot is that people would be happy to see that the systems that they currently have are working at the capacity for which they're designed. And so I wonder if, if you consider including maintenance as an option for acceleration. And so I wonder if, if you consider including maintenance as an option for acceleration and, and what your disposition would be to including that and what the impact would be if, on the, those improvements, if there was resources available.
This is a relatively simple question. Do you want to ask, answer the question to, that question would go to the presenters?
Raise your virtual hand who would have the answer to that.
Phil, Philip Cutter. Let me start off first. Councilmember Berluci, we did include a presentation, we may have went through it too fast, we did include in the presentation a plan to increase operations and maintenance, including ditch work if a bond referendum was passed and talked about what kind of portion of the bond referendum would need to be dedicated in order for us to enhance our maintenance and operation needs in line with the desired and increased maintenance cycle. Phil, is there anything you want to add to clarify that?
Yeah, this is Philip Cutter. Yes, we did take into account accelerating the maintenance and that was seen in the chart that I had, Ms. Berluci, on slide 22. Additionally, we do have another budget issue that is, is being put forward for additional vacuum trucks and crews to provide additional maintenance or to reduce the cycle and become proactive in flushing the drainage systems.
Great. So, any other questions?
Mr. Berluci has a follow-up question.
Okay.
Perhaps I missed the, on slide 22, which is not available to me in the, as something that I can see on this platform. I saw there was discussion about increased maintenance for the proposed new flood control projects, but if you could go to slide 22, I think that would be useful for me in what percentage of that something 400 and something million dollars would be included in, for maintenance would be something that I think would be something we would want to draw out and have made a little more clear.
Cutter, did you have a response?
The additional maintenance funding, the capital infrastructure for the bond was the 460 million, I believe. The additional maintenance funding, currently, we get about 14 million in our operating budget and then, as you see on this slide, about 18.5 to 18.6 million to support the major maintenance programs. And the desired cycles, you can see, there's only one that our current cycle matches the desired cycle and that's on our stormwater pump station overhaul maintenance. All the other ones, we are not at the desired recovery time or recycle time, or cycle time. And the, just the amount of cycle time and the funding needed is seen in the chart to the right. For example, on the, on the top one, the desire would be eight, eight years. And to go from a current level to the eight-year cycle would be an additional $2.6 million on top of the current 2.27. So depending on, it would allow you to, depending on what the, the maintenance effort that is needed or desired, whether it's BMP maintenance or pump station maintenance or neighborhood infrastructure, cleaning and rehab and, and repairing the cave-ins and stuff in, in the neighborhoods that we've been very proactive in doing the last five years, we could focus that funding on those. The additional funding on the other slides that I had indicated for the 9.35 million would be toward the new infrastructure.
Councilmember Moss has his virtual hand raised. Mr. Moss, if you would pause two to three seconds before beginning, thank you.
Just for background for the facilitator, so she'll know, I have extensive experience managing billion-dollar military construction projects, so I really do understand this topic. I think what we've missed here is understanding the consequences of inaction gets understated. We get right to engineering solutions before we communicate to policymakers and the public, what is the risk we're trying to buy down? And if we buy it down longer or don't buy it down at all, what is the consequence of experiencing the event, not just the initial loss, but the time and the loss of revenues it takes for reconstitution of the community? I think that's, we were, can't really evaluate the risk right because what we're doing is we're mitigating risk. It gets back to Councilman Berluci's point about the near-term risk is, is the performance of our legacy system, but we know the legacy system won't meet the new threat, that's the term I use, won't new, the new weather experience. So even if it works perfectly, their house could still flood and the damage still happens. We're trying to mitigate that. So I think we've lost that, that's a big picture discussion. As a point of reference, I think they say 3.5 is conservative for interest rates. I don't know what market parameter they're looking at, but all the forecasts, I think we're going to be below that. And in the near term, probably under two, but maybe at two. So I think maybe we need to have some ranges so we can get an idea and some more informed estimates about really what's conservative as an interest rate environment. I can't say what you could do six months out. That's an observation. I heard the comment made about more expensive staff outside, but you get, you can hire better talent for a shorter period of time in the private sector. That's been my experience. And why do you want to bring all these people on board forever, make a commitment? So I hope that's in the analysis because you might think you can hire those people, but you can't hire the people and the expertise that you want because they don't want to work for government. You may not like that answer, but it's true. So I hope we can bring that into play because I think that is key. But that risk assessment piece, I think that's the heart of our interaction with the public is what's the product we're trying to deliver? The numbers are just a means to that end, but the focus should be on, and I've mentioned this before and Patrick knows it, I think when we talk about projects, we ought to be able to talk about what that means in terms of things, how people think. I see a number, I see a pump station, but they want to know is, we've got this rainfall event standard and when that standard event happens, that's happening more frequently, this is what your neighborhood looks like today with the legacy system, even if it worked perfectly. And this is how your neighborhood's going to look in terms of the lack of flooding or only street flooding or only whatever we have. Show that difference in a visual format that people can understand and comprehend. The projects themselves don't convey the security that these projects are bringing to their home. Thank you.
Excellent. So, excellent. So are there any other questions or clarification? We want simple clarifications that, that we want to make sure are documented and then if there are anything, if there are any clarifications or things to be considered for the longer discussion, then I will capture them and make sure that they are included in our discussion. Anybody else?
Any additional council members with questions or comments? If so, please raise your virtual hand. Mayor, I see no one with their virtual hand raised.
Okay. Okay, at this point, if we could take about a 10-minute break, if that would be okay to give our fine staff here a little thing. And then when we come back, we'll engage in the council discussion and try to tie all this stuff together. Thank, thank all the participants. Appreciate it.
I'm sorry, can I just make one clarification for the folks that are joining in via WebEx? Please don't disconnect. We're just going to take a few-minute break and come back so you don't have to reconnect, okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much. I am looking forward to working with you. And just so we make sure that we're keeping everything clear, we're going to be starting with the facilitated discussion on budget guidelines and on budget guidance. And we're going to be starting with these questions. We're not limited to these, but we want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to weigh in on these particular questions. So what elements do you like and agree with? What could be clearer? What elements are missing? And what elements need limitations to be considered? So I'm going to move the, this to the side and I will be capturing everything on the, on a big whiteboard here. And then Julie Hill, the Director of Communications, will be, she's able to see, she's in line of sight of the whiteboard. She will also be copying everything that I write and sharing the screen, so it will be captured twice. Additionally, when all of this is over, we will be creating Additionally, when all of this is over, we will be creating a report that you will be receiving. So we will make sure that you have the opportunity to say, oh, what about this? But we're going to make sure that everything is covered. So with that, we're going to -- and I also populated all of the previous longer challenges or questions on the appropriate topic. And so you'll notice that there are only two topics here. I will flip this for some of the content for the budget guidance. After we confirm that all of the content is covered, I will take a photograph of one of the sides and then -- because I didn't have enough whiteboard space. And then we will go into the council priorities and focus areas on an entire board as well. So with that, let's go ahead and start with baseline revenues. And the first question is, what do you like and agree with? Can I capture anything on what you like or agree with?
Councilmembers, Mr. -- Councilmember Moss, your virtual hand is raised. It's down now.
Okay.
Now it's back up. Councilmember Moss, did you have a response?
To make sure that everyone has an affirmative response. Does she plan to go through each council member? Or I'm just trying to understand how we're going to make sure we have this, because when people don't respond at all, you don't have any feedback. I'm just trying to understand how we're making sure that we really have captured what the process is to make sure that all 11 of us have said yes, no, whatever, rather than silence. So that's a question about the procedure to capture the answers to the questions codes.
That's a great question. So how about this? Will you go ahead and do a roll call question so we can say, is there anyone -- well, I'll ask, do you like anything that you would like you like or agree with? And you can run through the entire group if it's quiet?
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding. Are we going to give each council member an opportunity to provide their comments and suggestions? Or are you going to be asking questions? And then we'll be going to go through the councilmembers for sort of a roll call.
I tell you, it may not be a bad idea to get through it all first and then, you know, let each council summarize at the end, you know, what their impressions are, what their, you know, what their recommendations are, how to move forward. But I think if we go ahead and have the -- set the foundation with discussions and try to tie it all together.
Right.
Is that agreeable?
So in summary, yes. I think what we're going to do is I will ask specific questions, the specific questions. What do you like and agree with? What could be clearer? What things are missing? Are there any limitations that you see that you suggest? And if it's quiet, at the end, I will say, all right, now we're going to do a roll call for general observations and suggestions and that sort of thing, so that everyone has an opportunity to weigh in whether or not it fills -- it's filled in in one of these subjects. Does that work? Okay, fantastic. So let's start with the first question one more time. Do you -- is there anything that you would like to weigh in officially that you like or agree with in regards to the baseline revenues?
So we'll start with Councilmember Abbott. Respond. She's having problems hearing. Let's move on. Councilmember Lucci.
You can move to the next council member. Thank you.
Councilmember Henley.
I'm shuffling papers, and I'm not finding that particular presentation. And I'm trying to remember what it said. I think it was like we were thinking of no new revenue sources. I'm not really sure what we're supposed to be doing. It's awfully hard to remember everything and know whether I agree with everything or not unless I'm looking at something right there on the screen.
You're going to be going to the budget guidance slides, and it'll be Slide nine that you can refer to, if that will help.
She's muted right now.
Can you unmute her?
Okay, we're currently switching computers so that we can make sure that we can.
We are actually having to switch presenters and so we can pull up the budget guidance So bear with us just a moment, please.
Thanks so much for your patience. And just so you know, I will also refer to the slide number for every topic moving forward so that it'll be easier for you to follow. And it should also be shared on the screen as well.
Councilmember Henley, Slide nine is now shared on the screen.
But I certainly am not saying that I'm not ever going to have any problems with any of this.
This is just the initial discussion. And so this is your initial impression, not going down in history, saying that you're not going to have any issues with it. Thank you for bringing that up. These are just your initial impressions.
The next council member is Councilmember Lewis Jones.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you. Mitch Jones.
Is there anything?
So the next comment should be Amanda asking for Mr. Jones. Then we're going to mute the house and go to Mr. Jones.
Sorry, we're trying to work through the logistics here. Mr. Jones, if you'll pause two to three seconds, we can hear you. Thank you.
If you can hear me, this is Lewis Jones. If you can hear me, I don't really have any comments to make at this point in time. I think it's very difficult to do an analysis of what we're hearing here in this presentation. So I'm just going to hold my comments until we have a better opportunity to converse eye to eye or with each other. I think the staff has done an outstanding job of presenting what they feel is what we ought to do, but I don't really want to make a comment that would lead anybody to believe that I'm in total agreement with everything that has been presented. Thank you.
There has been so much. Thank you so much. And there has been so much information today. And just for the record, these are just meant to be initial impressions and thoughts that I will capture, that are meant to be for future discussion. So it might be easier that we just begin by just saying, if there's anything that stands out in your mind, not just an exhaustive agreement with everything that's there, but just if there are anything that stuck out in your mind that you really, really liked that you want to mention, you can. Otherwise, we'll just assume that it's time to move on. Because we don't have a lot of time to go through, like nitpicking. This is just more, just as Kevin Chatalier said, it's a funnel. So this is just your first initial discussion about it. So if there's anything that anyone would like to talk about that's just that's front of mind, everything else is not necessary.
So let's continue where I stopped with the roll call, if you will. The next council member will be Councilmember Moss. And then I can go back and revisit or recognize the other councilmembers who have already spoken to see if there's something that stands out, if that's okay.
Sure.
So Councilmember Moss, if you would pause two to three seconds. Thank you.
I only have one comment. I'll leave my editorial review for email with Patrick. But I don't agree with continuing to increase the stormwater management fee, the regressive fee, and certainly that'll be a topic for later discussion of alternatives to a fee that has no relationship to a fee. So I do not agree with that bullet two with regards to stormwater management.
Thank you, Councilmember Moss. Councilmember Rouse, if you would like to begin, just pause two to three seconds. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Just been listening, taking in a lot of the information. Just going to reserve my comments for now, although I do want to say, I want to thank the city manager from when he first started off. I thought his report was very detailed and kind of gave us a good direction to start from. And so with that, I'd like to have more information, but for now, there's a lot I am still processing with this. So reserve my comments for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Tower, if you would pause two to three seconds, please.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. One question on the tax rate increase. Could we tie that back to the increase in the valuation that was referred to by Councilwoman Wilson at the beginning? I'm just trying to figure out what assumptions we're starting with. Are we going to make an assumption about the increase in real estate tax revenues based on a continuation of the current base rate?
Kevin Chatalier has his virtual hand up. Mr. Chatalier, if you'd just pause two to three seconds before beginning.
Councilman Tower and Councilwoman Wilson. So whenever we're working on our real estate assessments or real estate revenue projections, we work closely with the real estate assessor's office. What he does at this point in time, and we've already included, it was included in the five-year forecast in our baseline revenue projections, he's given us a preliminary estimate of close to 3% as being the assessment base growth. And as the city manager said earlier, that is in no way final, but that is the initial number he has given us to start working with. So that, at this point in time in the budget process, that is the latest and greatest information that we have to guide our real estate projections. So that's what we utilize. And then later in the process, as he gets the land book final, we'll then get the final land book value from the real estate assessor, and that's what we'll ultimately use. So at this point in time, it's not necessarily that we're requesting or asking city council to make that level of detailed input on the assumptions being made for each individual revenue source. Instead, what we're just asking for is just the general guidance of, okay, you know, we're going forward, not anticipating any tax rate increases. We would like to continue city council's existing policies for the -- to maintain the school funding formula as shown here on this slide, as well as the dedications that are allocated out in this table for the trustee taxes to these various funds for various reasons, established as city council priorities. So it's just general guidance that we're just looking for in our revenue as we're continuing to further refine our estimates and work further into the budget process.
Councilmember Tower, did you have any additional follow-up comments or questions?
I do, thank you. I just want to follow up and say that I tend to agree with Mr. Moss that we need to take a hard look in the projected increases in the stormwater fee. I think that's a very sensitive area and one that we need to pay very close attention to. It could spoil the whole party here unless we can justify that. And I think we have a hard time with that unless we're going to provide some other relief in some other place for people that are having to pay that fee. That's just my reaction generally. The other reaction I have is that, just again, in using assumptions, I think 3% growth in real estate rates, I'm not sure how far out we have that, if it's 3% a year. Maybe that'll work out in the long run. I guess it has. But I think the values are clearly going up and going up faster than 3%. The other just assumption issue that I have is I think I understand how you could use a 3.5% interest rate factor based on historical rates. But again, if we're going to the market, and if we're going to the market in over every year for a piece of this, maybe that is a correct rate to use or as good as we can come up with. But certainly, if we're going to market anytime soon, that seems to me to be an excessive rate, but that's all I had.
Okay. Councilmember Wilson, if you would just pause two to three seconds. Thank you.
I think those will all be good assumptions to make. I mean, of course, we're very early in the process, and there's so many unknowns and things that are, for example, the market salary survey that's being done and, you know, how we're going to go from here. But I think those are probably good assumptions.
Thank you. Councilmember Wooton.
I don't have any specific comments to provide on this particular topic. However, I do have general comments that I will provide at a later time. But thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back. Vice Mayor Wood.
I don't really have any comments to make at this time. I'm just gathering the information.
Thank you. Mayor, did you have comments?
No, not at this particular time. I guess the question is, do the council feel that at this point, we have the information that we need? But, you know, obviously, we have, you know, further discussion, you know? So I'm just wondering if this had time, if the council feels that we have achieved our objective by getting the information out at this time?
So I can start with the councilmembers alphabetically and go back through if you'd like.
Yeah, let's do that.
Councilmember Abbott.
Hey, thank you. Well, I didn't get a chance to comment, and I apologize for sound. I don't know if I'm -- I think it might be on my side, the internet connection. My son is also virtually learning at the moment. So anyway, I did just want to kind of chime in on one of the concerns I have, generally speaking with the real estate tax rate. And some of the feedback I'm hearing from the public is that with the way the housing market is kind of acting right now, and I apologize if I'm repeating whatever any other council member has already said, but there's some concern in the community that as quickly as property is turning over at the moment, that it's going to create this artificial demand that's not going to be have any longevity in the future. And I'm concerned as to what that means. And I'm concerned as to what that means for us. And I realize that there's still some more legwork that needs to be done with the city manager and the real estate assessor. But that is something that's on top of, that's been bothering me a lot and making sure that we're not seeing kind of something that's not going to be sustainable long-term. But I think I'm in a general agreement with that slide, at least in terms with trying to approach this from not raising the real estate tax. I agree with the comments that were made about the stormwater management fee and looking at how we can try to make that a little more equitable. I think what we've seen through COVID is that it seems to be impacting those of us, those of our residents that were already disadvantaged to begin with, since a lot of our upper income-earning residents probably still are having relatively consistent employment and pay, so to speak. So, but I think overall, Mr. Mayor, I'm in agreement with moving forward to the next topic, and I hope I kept that concise.
Thank you. Councilmember Berluci?
I'm in agreement to move forward to the next topic.
Okay, so the mayors made an executive decision here just to move to the next topic.
Okay. I'm going to take a quick photograph of this so we don't lose any of it. You got it? Okay. Okay. Excellent. So then the next topic is enterprise revenues. We're going to go on to enterprise revenues, so I'm gonna, and that's on slides 12 to 15. Slides 12 to 15. Okay, and we're sharing slide 12. So again, what we want to look at right now are what do you like slash agree with? Now, this is not saying that you agree with everything and you're not going to ever have concerns, but your initial impression, are there anything, is there anything that comes to front of mind that you really do specifically want to single out as something that you like? Is there something that could be clearer? Is there something that's missing? Or any limitations that you see? And we'll just go through one at a time, each of you, if there's anything that you would like to share on any of those topics, based on enterprise revenues.
Councilmember Abbott, if you'd like to begin?
I don't have any initial comments outside of what I've already said at the moment. Thank you.
Councilmember Berluci?
I don't have any additional comments at this time.
Councilmember Henley?
Yes, I do. I think this question, from what I heard in the last discussion, we have some concerns by some council members about this stormwater fee just in general. And if we're going to have to revisit whether or not we're going to have a stormwater fee, that's sort of a basic thing we're going to have to start talking about. Our whole CIP for stormwater projects that are in existence now is predicated on this rate increase occurring. And if we're not going to do that, that's a very basic assumption that we're going to have to deal with to begin with. So if we're not going to use a stormwater fee, how are we going to pay for all of these things? Because we either don't do them, or they're going to have to be converted to another revenue source. So I think this whole stormwater fee issue, if it's going to be an issue, needs to be addressed pretty quickly, or it's going to throw everything off that we're talking about as far as future funding.
Councilmember Jones?
I agree with what Mrs. Henley said. However, I, I think I'm willing to look at other sources of revenue as a possibility to help funding stormwater. I'm not ready to say what those revenues would be or where they would come from. But I do believe that we have to at least look at alternative sources of revenue in order to do the stormwater projects. In any event, I'm very supportive of doing the projects, and I will support what it takes to make them happen. So that's where I am right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Moss?
Yes, well, I do have some thoughts on this, and I've shared some of these with the city manager, and I think some of them with my peers. And I think part of it needs to be, we need to look at those CARE Act balances for those one-time expenses that we are now showing, I think it was $3 million worth of projects that we didn't do in the budget we adopted because we capped the rate. I think that's a good use of CARE Act money, it's one-time expense. I think, and it's a high priority effort. I think there's also things in this next time, if you look at the budget and the CIP, we could find 3 million, because that, that five, that increase amounts to about $3.5 million. So that would be a total of 6.5 to remediate what we had, didn't do last year, and then find another remediation of things we could do to offset the rate. I think we do need, and my point has been to move this to the general revenue, and if we need to be real estate tax rate, I think we need to look at the, getting back to Councilman Berluci's point about the deficit we have in our backlog, maybe we should look at that since all those projects, for the most part, had a lifespan greater than 10 years. So if you used bonded debt, it would last for the life of the debt at least. We could be baseline and get everyone to the standard. So I think how to cap this rate, because we still have revenue bonds we have to pay off out of this fund, but how we can cap this rate and then transfer the growth to the general fund as capping the rate, and then looking at how that backlog can be addressed, maybe in the context of the referendum discussion, is a way to go. Because I know it's difficult to be the city manager, and no one ever wants to step up to the plate and say how to pay for stuff. I understand all the implications of that. But I do concur with Mr. Jones with regards to, these are projects that we have to do. The question is, how do we best do them to provide the flood mitigation that the public deserves, but do it in the most progressive way possible? I don't dispute this, Henley, that this is a discussion that we need to resolve sooner than later. And it's not, and it's one I have repeatedly brought to council's attention, and maybe, hopefully, this guidance will let us get there. But I do believe we can cap the rate, and in the short term at least, we can buy our decision time. Because if the public doesn't approve the referendum, then I think we are kind of stuck with the rate as a way to go. I don't necessarily like that answer, but I can accept the public's judgment. And then we'll just have to do what that can sustain and look for other avenues longer term. But I'm for capping the rate at the current rate and using the relevant resources that we now have to buy down one-time expenses that are in that budget for last year, which was $3 million, and what would be in this year's proposed budget to keep it balanced. And we have the resources to do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Rouse?
Yes, I have no further comment at this time.
Councilmember Tower?
No further comment. Thanks.
Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think it's important to, I mean, nobody wants to raise a rate and increase fees and all that. So I think, and I know we didn't do it in this year's budget, but I think it's important, we really need to know what didn't get paid for and then what effect that's going to have in the future. Whether we continue this way or we continue another way, we really need a handle on exactly what that means. Thank you.
Councilmember Wooton?
Have no further comments at this time.
Vice Mayor Wood?
I'd like to say that I agree with what Councilman Jones said.
Mayor?
Thank you. You know, this is obviously a cause of concern and consternation to many people. And I think a lot of the going forward is going to be predicated on what we do with the bond referendum. Obviously, we have a significant need in the city that one way or the other is going to have to be addressed, not only for the viability of our military, but for economic development purposes. But I'm heartened by the fact in seeing the manager's initial report on how he intends to go forward. And I guess it's maybe a new era of accountability and, you know, just looking into things in project evaluate, evaluation. And so I am encouraged where I see going forward that we're going to see more accountability and transparency in making sure that the monies that we're using are going to be used effectively. So, you know, that's my opinion on this one. And we can move on to the next one, then.
Excellent. Okay, I'm going to flip the whiteboard.
We're going to have a slight delay here, you know, changing, turning the board around.
Okay, excellent. So now we're going to move on to baseline expenditures. That's on slide 16. And again, we're going to ask, what elements do you like or agree with that's front of mind, that just shot to the surface of your observations? It's not meant to be a comprehensive observation. What could be clearer at this initial viewing? What elements are missing? And are there limitations that you would like to put up for consideration?
Just to confirm, we'll go back through each council member? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Councilmember Abbott?
I would say I wholly agree with the slide in terms of what it's trying to accomplish. I'm really curious to hear more about all of the potential avenues for efficiencies. I appreciate what the city manager put together for us earlier this afternoon and his vision and some of his initial thoughts on how we can really ramp up those efficiencies. I'm curious as how we can look down the road in terms of our workforce and the different potential hiring avenues that exist in today's market, which we've talked about before. But that's just kind of my general, I generally agree with this slide.
Councilmember Berluci?
I'd say it's safe to say I'm in general agreement with maintaining existing programs and services. But of course, the slide also notes the need to seek efficiencies and to improve or enhance other services. So I think that, you know, the balance is going to be in the details. What, there are many programs that are going to need to be maintained and continued to offer services, and there are some potentially where we can create efficiencies to make room for additional programs or proposed expansion of programs that we weren't able to fund last year. For example, expansion of the mobile coresponder team with the police department, which sends a mental health professional on mental health calls with police officers and, you know, results in a 90% reduction in arrest. So I think we're going to need to look at where we can create those expansions through the efficiencies. So I appreciate all that.
Councilmember Henley?
Well, these are all laudable goals, certainly, but it's all going to come down to funding and how we're going to fund and where the funding is going to come from. I think that's the key.
Councilmember Jones?
What Mrs. Henley said, what Mrs. Henley said is correct. And, you know, we're going to have to make choices as to what we think is the most important things that we need to do or have to do. And we need to face the fact that until this COVID crisis is handled and/or abated, that it's going to have some serious impacts on revenues for the entire economy, and we're going to be affected by it. So I'm looking forward to hearing what the council's real choices are as far as what they want to fund. And I think, again, as I said initially, I think the staff's done an outstanding job of presenting to us, but it looks to me like we're going to have to make some choices that we may not want to make, but we're going to have to. So I'm just looking forward to having a meeting where we can sit down and talk more concisely and have conversation back and forth rather than the way we're doing it now. So, and I understand why we're doing it now, but I really think we need to all be together to discuss this. So we are going to have to make some choices, though. And I look forward to hearing what the rest of the council members have as far as where they put their priorities on those choices. Thank you.
Councilmember Moss?
I'm, and did a lot of my peer Councilman Jones's remarks. I'm willing to accept risk in existing programs and services. Clearly, our businesses and families have been, have had to take risks in their personal lives, their personal family programs, their personal family services. And to think that we are going to be immune from that, or that we can immune ourselves by that, by just passing the cost of not taking risk on to the customer base, I don't think is realistic. So I'm going to accept risk in programs and services, but I want to understand what those risks are. Those should be measured risks, and we should be able to engage the public on those risks, and they will be influenced by our priorities. Maintaining funding to support maintenance efforts. If we currently have unacceptable risk in maintenance that we are taking, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to know that, then those are places that we don't have trade space in, and we need to be filling that in. If there's maintenance areas where we are doing better than what we could be, or there are newer facilities, and we can balance that risk and, once again, understand measured risk, then maybe maintaining the funding to support maintenance efforts citywide is correct, but maybe we need to be rebalancing what that maintenance is. And maybe we shouldn't be bringing on new facilities with new maintenance requirements that we can't afford to sustain. So I'll be interested in, the devil's always in the details. On this last thing, you know, I've managed for the last 18 years an $18 to $22 billion budget in the submarine force. I see the sufficiency claim all the time. As soon as you start to mark someone's budget to take it, generally speaking, it's very hard, Mr. City Manager, to find efficiencies to implement in the year of execution of next year's budget unless there's just things that management has failed to harvest in the past. But when someone says seek efficiencies and that's going to be a source of funding, then that efficiency should be executed and implemented in the budget that we are adopting or before it's adopted. So we're not just levying an unrealistic tax that later creates a bill that we got to fill in. And generally speaking, I know you're working hard, and I applaud you on these performance standards, but I think you would admit that probably at the time that we're adopting the budget in May, that those standards as a move will not have provided us the data set and the granularity that we would need to be making budgetary adjustments based on those. But if we are, I applaud you even more. But I think this, getting back to Mr. Tower's comment earlier that he mentioned about the tax rate. There's the nominal rate, which is the current rate. And then there's the lowered rate, which says if you kept revenues neutral. I think what Mr. Tower was trying to ask, if the expectation was a 3% rise, but we get a 5% rise, the lowered rate would be much lower and that would represent even above the estimate, another tax increase on households. And we're, and I think he was asking us, which lowered rate is the budget going to be based on? The one that the five-year forecast would have anticipated? Or the one when we hear in late March, just before we get the budget from the real estate assessor and gives his forecast on what he thinks the one-July book value is going to be? So those are my comments and thank you.
Councilmember Rouse?
No comment at this time.
He said no comment. Councilmember Tower?
Thank you. I'm not sure if this is the right place to say it, but a couple of things on my mind. Maintaining existing programs and services. Some of our programs and services clearly need to be more than maintained. I continue to hear that our permitting program, and I know the city manager is well aware of this, is causing significant negative impact on our economic development efforts. That our best class of folks that are ready, willing and able to build new projects that enhance the city's economic development program and are suitable in every way that wouldn't have any problem, that have already been approved or just being held up for excessive amounts of time in the administrative review. And so I just want to make the point that maintaining these programs, I simply think because of the importance of economic development, if we, if we don't grow to meet the needs of the city, we're going to have to, have to ask our citizens to pay more. A much preferable way is if we can have a growth that is suitable and appropriate and done in a way that all of us would be proud of. But those folks that are willing and able to do work that we would be proud of are being frustrated. And I want to make sure we have a good program in place to do that. And it may cost more money. That's simply a point I make in the baseline. The other point that I have is, and again, this is off, maybe off topic where it's better, but I also am not sure when we talk about the Tier One and Tier Two projects. I need, the shorthand for those, I'm simply not that familiar with. I just am going to need some further explanation and more details. I'll actually get into the CIPs and look at them and see where the detail is. There are some areas in, I know in my district that really need attention. And I know that they are, there are street improvements planned. And I still having a hard time figuring out how stormwater improvement programs that are, that also impact street improvement programs. Because lots of times that's when you get the work done, is how those are tied together and how those are prioritized. But that's more of a question, I'm sure, for another day. I've said enough. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you. I just thought I would mention that we used to do, you know, looking at the cost avoidance and ways to save money. And probably, no one knows these, has these ideas more than anyone than our employees. And that maybe we should reinstitute a program for our employees to give us ideas on how they see we could save money. Because they're out there and they're doing it every single day. So I think that's something to be considered. And also, we get ideas from our constituents. I got one this week that said, you know, we need to encourage our homeowners instead of just cutting their grass and bagging the clippings to use, if they need to buy a new lawnmower, to buy a mulch mower and it mulches the grass and goes into the ground and fertilizes it rather than, and it would save a lot of money on picking up, you know, all those clippings and time that the city could have. So I think that we, we do need to look beyond some of what we're doing and look for the people who are out there who see a good idea and have a means to get that idea to us, to the staff and see if it's workable.
Councilmember Wooten?
So my initial thought when I look at the baseline expenditures is that in, you know, any organization, you do want to see what programs are working well and services are working well and, you know, what are, what programs and services are not. And as has been already mentioned before, are there cost-saving measures that we can take, take part in, take part of or take part in? I think that would be physically responsible for us to do. And, you know, that's an area of accountability that I'm sure would resonate with the citizens. But generally, I'm in agreement with what I see here so far. However, I do think there, this area would require more specifics and details. And I look forward to receiving more of that information as we go forward. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Wood?
I agree with the concept of the baseline expenditure shown on this slide.
Thank you. Just confirming that you didn't have any comments. You were cutting out just a bit. Is that what it said? Okay. Mayor Dyer?
Agree with Lewis Jones on two points. First of all, hopefully, this is just a great foundational get-together in preparation for our February retreat. And I guess the sincere hopes is we are able to convene face to face. And Lewis's other points about establishing priorities and coming up with new ways of innovations and cost-cutting measures that really don't compromise essential city services. But once again, hopefully, the February meeting will be able to convene. Thank you.
Excellent. Excellent. So it looks like, are we finished with this? Okay, excellent. So after, now that we do, we have completed this, I'm going to need a couple of minutes because we're going to move another whiteboard into play. So if you want to take a stretch, it'll be about a minute and a half, two minutes for us to get the stormwater bond referendum whiteboard in place. And while we're doing that, we can also screen share the bond referendum slides, right?
Compensation part of it?
Oh, you are right. I am so sorry. We need, you're right. The compensation. Okay, I apologize. We still have the compensation topic to cover. Yes, slide 17. So let me take a quick photograph of what we have here and we'll get moving on compensation. Okay. Would you like for me to go ahead and start recognizing council members? Sure. Thank you.
Yep, let's go ahead.
Okay, Councilmember Abbott? I think we may need to just pause two to three, a couple of minutes since she indicated we would take a break. Okay, we're good. Sorry. Thank you, thank you. Okay. If there is a council member that's ready to make a comment, they could go ahead and raise their virtual hand. And then we can begin alphabetically again. Councilmember Wood, Councilmember Wood, I mean, sorry, Vice Mayor Wood?
Well, I think that we, we need to focus on this compensation piece quite a bit. Because as everyone recalls, in the budget that we had coming pre-COVID, we had compensation increases, we had additional funding for workforce development and for other, other things, compression and that sort of thing. And that all got wiped out by COVID. And, you know, as we move forward, we realize we have issues with staffing. The manager is, is working on the market salary survey, which I think is going to reveal the fact that we're going to need to probably have structural changes to, to the salary ranges. And, and I really think that this is something that needs to be in the forefront. I mean, frankly, if I had to select two things that I think we need to focus on in addition to the baseline budget, it would be the compensation and then the implementation of the Hillard Hines recommendations regarding building security. But, but I really think if we're specific to compensation, this is something that, that needs to be addressed.
Councilmember Moss? Councilmember Moss?
Yeah, this, I think first of all, it might sound like it's editorial, but this is a significant, because words make a difference. The title of this slide should be "Total Compensation." And so I would agree with the Councilman Wood that this is one of the more important topics that we talk about. It's a major component of our expenditures. It does resource the bases of the services that actually accomplish work. I think we need to also consider in this topic, the balance between how we pay for pension costs. We need to, we need to look at how we share the burden of health insurance premium growth. And a good example, I was talking to a couple of civil engineers who recently were laid off from an engineering firm here in Cal. So you may be aware of those taking place. So I think when we're talking about total compensation, our policy and job security is part of that. So I think we really do need to get that answer from that comprehensive total compensation look. So we really be comparing apples to apples and I look forward to getting that. When we do get that, that should be at the top of our priority list for adjudicating what that is and what timeframe we can make it happen. I think also we need to look at something not mentioned here, segmenting our workforce in different ways. And also looking at retention incentives that don't bear onto our pension costs. I think also here we need to be looking at creative entities that we might create in order to give us more flexibility, like the private sector and areas where that is necessary to get the right talent that we need versus others. And that might be in the area of information technology possibly, or whether or not that compels the case for outsourcing. One of the areas I think we, I've talked about this many years, I think we under-invest in our own people. People depreciate, or their capital knowledge depreciates just like it does with everything. In areas where there's mandatory certifications and training, like law enforcement via EMS, we do lots of training for those people. But I don't see why we do lots of training for our folks in quantitative analysis or data mining, data analytics, all the things that, that our business proposition requires us to be able to do to better understand what's driving the behavior we see, what's driving the costs that we see. So we are not investing, in my judgment, enough in increasing the analytical capability of our organization to understand itself. I think that goes hand in hand with the performance standard. So I think we have a real deficit as relative to our investing in our people outside of public safety to get the job done. But I do think getting that result back, that the total compensation look is key to the actions we take. And it should be one of the top items that we adjudicate when we talk about priorities. Thank you.
Councilmember Berluci?
I have no comments at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Henley?
This certainly is an important topic. And I think the market salary survey is going to be extremely important. I hope we're going to get it early enough to be able to use it with the budget. And I think we did ask that it look at the total compensation question. I think that's very important. Thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
I would ditto what Ms. Henley just said. I think compensation obviously is extremely important to us. And we need to see the total package of what we're doing and compare that to the marketplace before we can make any serious decisions about whether or not we're going to have a 3% increase or not. I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just saying I want more information before I would make that decision. Thank you.
Councilmember Rouse? Councilmember Rouse?
No comment.
Councilmember Tower? Councilmember Tower?
I would simply generally endorse Mr. Moss's analysis that he just gave. Thanks.
Councilmember Wilson?
Well, this is always an important topic when you're talking about money, people that work very hard for it and what they're going to get paid. Of course, this year, when COVID hit, we were right in the middle of our budget, as you all know. And, and no salary increases were given. And I think we saw some of the feeling of that with our waste management folks. So this is, I, I think that market survey is going to be really important and not just on our side. I mean, there's big concerns about teacher compensation as well. So anyway, it's, I think it's going to be something we really need to give a lot of attention to.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes, thank you. I was happy to see that this is a priority listed in terms of compensation increase. Because as was already mentioned, and I did request that we go back and review salary increases because we weren't able to provide those increases during our last budget cycle. So, and generally, I'm very glad to see that this is a priority and I certainly support it as well as I support the market survey analysis as well. I think that's going to be instrumental to compensate in the staff and showing them that we do truly appreciate what they do for us every day. So thank you.
Councilmember Abbott?
I'd like to, again, kind of agree with most of everything that's been said. I agree this is going to be a big deal. I'm very concerned in speaking with a lot of our employees in terms of feeling undervalued or unappreciated. But I also think that bringing everything into alignment and, and share, you know, making sure that everyone's aware you know, making sure that everyone's aware of the shared reality that we kind of have a wage issue for our middle-income, low-income people across the city, both are in the private sector as well. And so, like comments that have already been made, making sure that the total compensation package is really reflective in what people are truly earning is of high priority to me because I think it's really easy to feel like you're not compensated enough, because I think most everyone feels that way. But when you look at what's happening in the private sector, many professional positions are not offering benefits.
Mayor Dyer?
Okay, thank you. I think what's going to be critical going forward is the salary survey. You know, there are, you know, let me put it this way, every employee in this city is valued, but when we're short in areas like engineering, and, you know, there's a lot of market competition out there, you know, we need them for the things like Mr. Tower brought up about to make sure that the planning department is, you know, working better, and then also for some of the major projects that we had here identified, to make sure that we have the right personnel onboard that can execute, you know, some of these plans. But once again, I concur with everybody, this is going to be important going forward, and what we will be dealing with.
Excellent. If that's everything, I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to capture this. And then, the last thing before flood, the stormwater bond referendum discussion, is going to be the key priorities and focus for the city council. So I'm going to erase this, and then we will do the key concerns and top priorities. I will need to switch boards after this. Yes. Okay. Key concerns and top priorities.
Would you like for me to go ahead and start calling on councilman?
That would be great. And again, we want, what do you like and agree with, that's front of mind, not an exhaustive analysis, but if there's anything that's front of mind that you love, what could be clearer, what's missing, and what limitations?
We'll begin with Councilmember Abbott.
I think this was already touched on, but the Hillard Hines recommendations are pretty important to me in making sure, I think that ties into some of the issues we're having with, no, I don't want to say issues, but some of the concerns that are being raised in the workforce, and making sure that we are, you know, streamlining those processes as best as possible. I agree with the disparity study being listed on the slide as well. I think we need to really dial into that and making sure we're coming through on those promises. I mean, generally speaking, I think these are all important topics moving forward, and as has been said, how we execute them and what they're going to cost is really what all that's going to boil down to, but I'm in general agreement with what's been laid out in the slides, and, you know, I'm looking forward to the stormwater discussion in greater detail.
Councilmember Berluci?
Well, thank you. I would just convey that I'm in general agreement with most of what's, if not all of what's been presented on this slide. I'm very happy to see that the disparity study implementation is included as a top priority. It's obvious to everyone that we're going to need to evaluate additional needs for short-term rental, and so I'm glad that's a top of mind because we're going to be looking at the administrative side of that. And I would also echo what Councilmember Abbott said about the Hillard Hines recommendations, and hopefully using some of those recommendations to provide some reassurances and comfort to the city workforce, who have expressed a variety of concerns to me and others. And then, I think that I'm very happy to see that the public defender compensation is included as something that's, could be explored. I think that's particularly in the year 2020, when criminal justice reform and equality and justice and equity in the community are things that are being examined and considered and prioritized by our community, that is something that really is low-hanging fruit in terms of how we can make a positive impact, and I'm hopeful that we can have conversations about how to build toward parity. And I also think that it's important that we really consider the pause that we placed on the expansion of the mobile co-responder team with the police department, and whether and what the feasibility would be of restoring that proposed expansion, because, again, that falls in line with really a lot of the concerns that are being raised around the, throughout our community and truly around the country about criminal justice and about equity and opportunity in our community. So I think that's a really important point, and one that I hope we'll consider. Obviously, glad to see the stormwater there. I think we're going to need to continue to find and identify that balance between new flood control projects and also expediting the maintenance and operation of existing systems and how those two things work together. Thank you.
Councilmember Henley?
Well, it's certainly a good, long list of key focus areas, and I think you've done a good job of letting us know what we've got to prioritize. On that stormwater slide, I think one thing that's not on there that is going to be important for us to focus on is being able to stay abreast of all of the opportunities for funding stormwater. We're going to be seeing a lot during this year with the governor's stormwater master plan being developed, some of these grant funds that are out there and available, the regu money is going to begin to come into play this year. We need to make certain we are positioned to get our share of that money, federal grants that are available. I think we're really going to have to have a focus on funding stormwater in addition to what we have to do locally. I think we've got a lot of opportunities, and I think we really need to have a focus on that.
Councilmember Jones?
As we move into this coming year, I think we've got, really get down to the basics of what our purpose is in government. Public safety, of course, is one of the priorities that we have to look at. And when I look at the compensation that we're giving to our public safety people, I question whether or not we've given it the kind of importance or recognize the kind of importance that it is to us. And so I think we really, when we start talking about compensation, we should be talking about compensation for those jobs that are part of our primary focus. And so I would say public safety and compensation for public safety is one of my priorities. I do think that stormwater is also one of our top priorities in that we, from the standpoint of our communities' well-being and our property values, and the safety of our people who live in these areas where there's stormwater issues, we need to deal with it. And Virginia Beach is one of those areas that has stormwater issues and are going to get more severe, and so it has to be one of our top priorities. I think the disparity study is important because we want all of the people who live in our city to feel like they're a part of what goes on in the city, and have a share of the opportunities that are available. So the disparity study is important, and I hope that we keep an eye forward on that. The, you know, the, I think the short-term rentals are a bigger problem than we have necessarily focused on in the past, and I'm heartened by the fact that their council seems to be starting to recognize that they are a problem, and the social impacts that they are going to have long-term in our city if we don't get them under control. And so I think that's one of the issues that needs to be addressed. If we don't want to diminish real estate values and the quality of life that we so proudly espouse in the city of Virginia Beach. So, and lastly, I'll mention economic development. We can't lose sight of the fact that economic development helps create the kind of revenues that we need in order to pay for all of these services and addressing the issues that we have in front of us. So we don't want to put that aside, and we don't want to put aside our oceanfront priorities because tourism is one of our major economic drivers in addition to the military. So all of those things are important, they're all priorities to us, but we have to address them evenly and try to make sure that we spend our money wisely where it counts the most, and I will say any more than that. Thank you.
Councilmember Moss?
Well, I want to go back to the beginning when I said two things were missing, I think are overarching. One of the key focus has to be through all of this, is that what we adopt at some point and come to is affordable, and understanding the impact of whatever we do has on the people whom we serve. That's a non-programmatic thing, most of these things are very programmatic. The other thing I mentioned was, and this captured part in disparity study, but as we look across all our programatics, I think we have to be sensitive to the issue of the diversity, inclusivity of both the programs and the processes of those programs, and the impact on the people that they serve. I don't think we can lose that. I do agree with Councilman Jones, it's our core functions, we have to put priority often think about, we start building this big budget, but if someone told me I had a dollar, and then you start saying, well, really, what's my first priority? Well, I always got to pay debt service. If you start walking around that, is there any discretionary money left? And if there's not, which probably in this case there won't be, then we have to think about where am I going to take risks to generate the cash flow? Because I think economic development is something we haven't talked much about, but it is essential, and it gets back to the point I made earlier, as we look at maybe more of our CIP than the operating budget, are there places where we should reallocate risk to provide the capital necessary to achieve an economic development advantage that absent additional investment, we can't achieve? I don't know what that answer is, but I know it's a question we should consciously pose and know how we answered it. Economic development would be on my top. I talked about compensation. I think the other things are important, but wouldn't rise to my key focus list would be this compensation issue, and I think we have to migrate away from these, treat like we have this uniform workforce, that compensation increases are the same for everyone. It's just not the real world today. And if we're going to get the talent, we have to be much more adaptive, and hopefully that will come out of that, so much more adaptive in the compensation structures that we have. And that's a big bill. So once we do that, that's going to start reducing our discretion. So I hope, so my key focus is to have a disciplined resource allocation process that we understand and can explain to the public. Thank you.
Councilmember Rouse?
Thank you. I still think there's a ton of information we received today, and I somewhat agree with across the platform of the steps we have to take to not only improve our city going forward, but I think one of the things I am mostly want to focus on is rebuilding our infrastructure, you know, according to flooding and that nature, but also rebuilding our staff. I really think, you know, we should take more of a serious look at that and figure out this compensation issue across the board. I think that is, I think right now, you know, we are, we fare slightly better than a lot of municipalities throughout the country, and so I think we have a great opportunity to be more aggressive in the things we prioritize. And so I think that should be one of them, is rebuilding our workforce here within Virginia Beach so we can thrive post-COVID. I think that economic development focus or tab is something we definitely should hone in on, but I also think we should, you know, remind ourselves or be ever mindful of the affordability of living in this city, and from a workforce standpoint, not just for our teachers, but for our public safety, and those who are in law enforcement as well. I mean, it's extremely hard. It's extremely hard to live in this city. The affordability of the city is kind of, to me, it's an issue that we really need to take a serious look at. I think that will help solve a lot of other issues down the line. I'm really interested also, when it comes to having true diversity and inclusion, putting forth real legislation forward that's going to help mitigate those concerns, but also help improve the way we function as a government and as a city. And so, I guess I just want to leave council, I think we have a great opportunity in front of us because although we all have been hampered by this pandemic, you know, it could have been a lot worse for the city of Virginia Beach, and I think a lot of municipalities wish they had the capacity, financial capacity that we have right now. And so what that means is that we have an advantage, and we should try and be aggressive and take advantage of that to solve a lot of the major issues we have. So that's the end of my comments, and thank you.
Councilmember Tower?
Thank you. Just a few points. I am, I just think the first thing I would say is I'm just mindful of the fact that this is a forward-looking conversation, but we are presently still mired in the COVID pandemic. It will be a good while before we're out of it. I know vaccine arrived, it's in terror today, and that's a great beginning of the end, but it's only the beginning. It will be quite a long time. Wearing masks, socially distancing, having remote meetings such as this, I think will be with us for a while. And I also want to make sure we don't forget the people that are hungry a while. And I also want to make sure we don't forget the people that are hungry in our city, make sure they're getting fed. I know our food bank is doing a terrific job, but I am, I, I can't help but be mindful of those folks. And the others are the small business people. Because while our city finances may have survived COVID and will continue to, I am worried that a number of our businesses will not survive unless we find a way to help them either get more resources from outside our capacity or find ways to help them with our own resources. Having said that, I, I want to echo what Ms. Henley said about stormwater funding. I hope that we have someone within our staff that has, has his or her primary duty advocating for the need for stormwater funding and finding where it is, whether it be federal or state government or private grants or innovative programs that other municipalities are using. This needs to be foremost in our minds. We simply cannot afford to let opportunities for funding go away, even if they don't have a great chance. As Mr. Moss says, we've got to assess the risk of, of putting, maybe going all out to get some funding. If the, if the numbers are big enough and there is even a chance we can get some big money because we sure could use it in stormwater. It is a big, giant sucking sound on everything else we're trying to do. I mentioned STRs briefly. This has been a hellish transition, I think, from, into the STR era, but we're beginning to get a handle on it, I hope. But enforcement will be absolutely necessary. We have to spend what's necessary to enforce the STR regs that we put in place. We need it, we need the revenue. We need it to be fair to our citizens and especially fair to the ones in terms of, that are close to and have STRs in, in their immediate vicinity. We owe them the obligation of enforcing these STR regs. We cannot leave it to the citizens to do that. And then finally, I think Councilman Jones and Councilman Moss made impassioned pleas for innovative looks at economic development. As I said earlier, that's, I, I think that's really a key because we, we only really have so many ways to solve all these problems. And economic development is, while we have, we have a good base, it clearly needs improvement. And we can do this. It's not that we don't know how to. We've got talented people on our staff who, who can attract the right outside groups and who can encourage local businesses to expand and find the right properties for them. We still have some, although we're very limited because of, of our friends in the Navy and some of the things we have to do to work around, work around them. There are still opportunities out there. And this is the time to look at every one of those. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson?
Anything to add? There's, I don't have anything to add. There's been a lot of really good things said, and I, I think we'll just go on those merits.
Thank you. Councilmember Luton?
Overall, all the key focus areas listed are very, very important. And I certainly agree with all of them. I'd have to say, I am particularly happy and delighted to see that the disparity forum and the disparity studies, excuse me, are being highlighted here because the city did spend a considerable amount in investing in that particular project. And it's so important to continue to review, evaluate, and ensure that all of those recommendations are fully funded. And so, I'm very happy to see that this is a key area and focus. I do believe this is the first time that I have seen it specified in such a manner. So, I have to say thank you for, for doing so. Also, the information regarding opening Burton Station and ensuring that they're staffed properly is a very important issue as well, especially to the residents. I know that this particular item has been, staff has been working on for some time. So, I'm glad to see this as a key focus area. I also would like to just echo and ensure that we do follow up on the Hillard Heinz recommendations. I know that in our previous budget cycle, we were not able to implement all of those areas, but I'm glad to see that this is a key area and a priority. And so, I'm, I look forward to seeing those recommendations implemented as well. And I'll continue to advocate in, for that area as well as the disparity study recommendations. Also, short-term rentals, I'm glad to see that that area is listed as well. And I'll continue to ensure that, maintain that focus and ensure that it, it brings the necessary attention needed to be successful. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Wood?
Well, thanks. I had already made my comments about the compensation piece and the Hillard Heinz expenditures that, that we're going to have to do. And, and I would just echo what people have said about, about a number of those things, particularly Councilman Jones talking about the public safety aspect of it. Because with, with the civil unrest nationally and, and everything that, that they've, they've been going through, it's, it's a very tough, tough time to, for recruitment of law enforcement. I will say, extraordinarily impressed with the new police chief. And kudos to, to the city manager about that. I've noticed just a few little odds and ends, things that he's doing that are actually resonating very well within, within the workforce. Having said all that, the, the one thing I think that we absolutely 100% have to improve on is STR, STR enforcement. In my opinion, we apps, there, there's just no excuse. We have to have robust STR enforcement in place before Memorial Day. I mean, there's just no way that we cannot have that. We've had all these STRs that have been approved through the CUP process. Hopefully, we'll get through this overlay process and, and, and narrow the, the scope quite a bit. But I know everybody on council has heard these horror stories about, you know, STR issues in, in neighborhoods and, and just, there, there's just no way that we, we can avoid spending money, whatever the source, on, on STR enforcement. So, we've got to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank everybody for their comments. It was really spot on. I think what we have to do going forward, obviously, we're in many ways in uncharted waters and with a lot of unknowns out there. And, you know, I agree with Aaron that we really did, you know, come through this together in a very strong way as compared to a lot of other cities. But I think in terms of, we have to have a short-term focus and a longer-term focus. And the short-term focus is to address the immediate situations. And once again, that's going to involve funds. And that's where I concur with my colleagues who talked about economic development. But then also to look forward and playing chess, not checkers, and looking years out about where we want to be. And I think one of the biggest concerns I've heard since I've been on council is the fact that when a lot of graduates of residents here finish college, they can't find those jobs. But we have a plethora of opportunity right now with what's going on with broadband and some other things, you know, with the fiber ring that Rosemary's working on. And, you know, I think, you know, we got to bring that high level, new revenue sources in to help pay for all of this stuff. And so, I just think that's going to be a priority that we have in the short term and the long term. And I thank you all very much for your particip-
Are you going stormwater now?
Yes, we are now going to be moving to stormwater. And so, we're going to need just a minute to, to flip, switch out the, the whiteboard. Okay. Now, for this particular conversation, we are at the very, very initial stages of this conversation. And so, what we're going to do for this is we're going to have just hand raises. So, if, if we can, so instead of having every person weigh in verbally, we're going to do hand raises. And so, I'm still going to ask the same questions, but we're going to just weigh in by hand raises. And then, if there's anything of great concern, then we can note it. But let's go ahead and get started. We're going to be looking at the projects included, and that's on slides nine through 13 of the Stormwater Bond referendum. And we're going to have by just a show of hands, if there's anyone that needs to weigh in specifically on whether you like or agree with something specific, if there's something that could be clearer, if there's anything missing, or if, if you need limitations to be considered. So, we're just going to have just by show of hands.
Well, I'm sorry. So, I can't really do that. I won't, so Councilmember Henley has questions and comments.
Okay, great.
I think if they raise their hand-
Right.
Then we'll open up the floor for discussion. That's-
Correct. That's what I mean.
I'm sorry. I thought you said by show of hands.
I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Just by raising your hand, yes.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Henley, you're unmuted.
Well, maybe, maybe I didn't understand. I thought we were only going to be voting on these projects. And I had saved up all of my comments to say something at this time. So, I'm, I, I hope we're going to be able to make comments and not just raise our hand.
You will raise your hand if you want to. Yes, you will raise your hand if you want to make a comment. Instead of doing a roll call, we're just, if anyone wants to make a comment, then they will have an opportunity to raise their hand.
Go ahead, Councilmember Henley.
Commenting on, I was looking at, it, it looked to me like we were going to be voting on projects according to what's written on that board.
I believe there are any, oh. Councilmember Henley, no votes can be taken at this meeting. This is a special session, a workshop meeting, so no votes are allowed. This is just for comments and discussion.
And it's just to find out where, Mrs. Henley, where we all stand with these things going forward. And, you know, just to establish a base and a foundation to move forward.
I feel like I've got some important information to share. I hope it's okay if I do it at this time. Would it be all right if I go ahead and, and make some comments about what's happened in the Southern Watershed Studies?
Absolutely.
Okay. When we were talking about a possible referendum last year at this time, I was very slow on all of that because I didn't feel that we had anything to really offer in the Southern Watershed. And some folks who maybe have a good memory will remember that at the time we adopted the budget in 2019 in May, I asked if Dewberry could go forward with additional study to see if there would be any way that the flooding could be ameliorated somewhat in the Back Bay area and North Bay. Because all of our answers to people were, we really can't do anything about it. And so, it was included in the budget comments at that time that they would go forward, and they did. And during the summer of 2019, we had a series of focus groups of folks in the Southern Watershed who talked about their ideas and their questions and so forth. And I'm just so pleased that Dewberry really did take it seriously, or the city took it seriously. And I really have to thank Tom Leahy and, and Mark Johnson, who attended all of those focus groups, and Amanda, who took the notes as well. And that work has actually come out to us within the last month or so. And I was so pleased to get copies of that. And I hope the rest of you can too. It's very preliminary, and so, it's still in a very draft form. But what Dewberry did was they looked at the suggestions that people had. Could there be an inlet? Could there be a major pump? Could there be siphons or marsh restoration? And in looking at, at all of this and doing a very good job of analyzing all of those, just from the sound of it, you can hear there are three major engineering solutions and then their natural mitigation part. One thing that I see that they determined that I think we have to keep in mind is that there are 2.7 billion cubic feet of water that would have to be displaced from Back Bay to the ocean in order to make anything happen. And, and so, clearly, you can see that those engineering solutions, although they're still going to be looking at those, are going to be long-term. But what gives me a, a good bit of hope, and I think you see it in what Tony Otterback suggested today, that doing the marsh restoration and SAV restoration, that is, the green struck, infrastructure does offer some hope in the short term. And you saw that in the Tier One flood control projects. And so, you were seeing that for the first time today. And I really want to give you a little bit of background on that. That essentially is marsh restoration and SAV restoration, along with other things that will be bundled in that. And we had last year applied for a federal grant to begin some of that work. We didn't get it last year, but we did get $135,000 this year that's just been awarded to us to begin a, a pilot program with that. And so, when you look at this stormwater green infrastructure item in the flood control projects in the Southern Watershed, that's something you haven't seen before. And I really want you to, to, to know how promising it sounds and how, how much I think that we have a real opportunity to do something. So, I, I think that this is good news. Of course, it's very preliminary. The study that they've done has got draft written all over it. It's not something that we can put out yet and say this is any final recommendation. But I really think over the next few months, when this can be refined, that it can have some good possibilities. And this is where I, I think in my comments before, when I said I think we really have opportunities to get money from other sources, particularly if we have an existing project, which this would be, once we have gotten in, in this federal grant line, which we have gotten $135,000 for, we should be positioned to get more monies. Also, with the state, with the master plan that Governor Northern is asking to be developed this year, green infrastructure is a major component of it. And having this as a project that we're already working on, I think is going to give us a lot of opportunity. So, when we're looking at all of this with the partnering that we are allowed, I feel very encouraged. And I did want to share that with you, particularly as you're looking at all of this and you look at that item and you say, well, I've never seen this before. And how could we even think about putting that much money in a stormwater green infrastructure project? I just wanted you to have some background on that because it's something you haven't seen until today. And I really am anxious to be able to go out and talk to the public about it. I think they're going to be very pleased that they were listened to and that these things are even being looked at. And I thank you for the opportunity to share that with you before you get any further in line.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moss?
Well, I don't want to get into the eaches of which program should be in or out. But as I expressed to Patrick earlier, I'd like to see the different scenarios that they did in the model. Because I, we put a lot of money into this federal- Because I, we put a lot of money into this federal model to customize it for Virginia Beach. So we ought to be able to show to the public how we use the model to say, these lists, whatever that, whatever's in that list represents the best optimization of flood mitigation for the Phase One dollar. Because we really have, in effect, think of this in three pieces. We've got what we've got budgeted and programmed with different current revenue flows, which we might adjust where they come from. We would have this $455 million bond referendum, and I've been using 450 for about a year, absolutely close. And then we would have the ability, whether it's 20 years, I prefer 10, but might be 20. As those debts are retired, we have another $450 million of borrowing capacity. So that roughly represents $1.2 billion of money over X period of time. And I think that was roughly what our capital requirement was in some year dollar. I don't know if it was 2019 or 2018 dollars, that that was represented our requirement. Then, of course, based upon what the city. So I think on that column somewhere, there ought to be some kind of index scoring, like they do with transportation projects. How did we, how did the model tell us that these were the right projects to do? And then the model might have said one thing, but because of where we already were vested, we overrode the model, and now this is the right answer. But I think people are going to want to make sure, and I certainly would as a voter, that the projects were based on science, the best science in our model, rather than a portfolio of council allocations. And I'm not suggesting that's happened, but I'm just saying we have to be able to show. And the model should be what should be the honest broker of the projects that we pick. So that's, that's my big picture concern. And then I've shared privately, and Patrick, you're certainly free to share that with the other members if you'd like, or you can say I can't. But we have got to talk about these projects. And this, I think this is key, on how we communicate with the public, to tell them why we're doing this. And while this may be a good presentation to talk about the programatics and the financing options, this is not a briefing, it's not designed for that, so I'm not criticizing staff. But we have to have a different way of communicating with the public. If you think we have a $65 billion plus tax base, right? So 1% of that's what, $650 million? So for roughly 2% of our current tax base, in terms of capital investment, we can provide a substantial amount of, of protection. I think our bond issuers would like to know that the thing that we're pledging, which is our taxable real estate and the businesses that are on there, that we are protecting the collateral that we've already used. So I think we can make a compelling case with the, with the people in New York or the other, maybe now the world capital markets. But that our approach, even though we might bump up against our policies, and maybe we need to think about adjusting those, but we are, we are not creating new liabilities. We are protecting the very collateral that we are pledging for the debt we've issued to date. So I think we've got a, we've got to talk about that. But I would like to know, you know, how, what this
thing is showing.
does. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Moss, the last couple of comments you made, the last comment you were making was cut off. Could you repeat that?
Folks, I know that all right, I am all in on the bond referendum. I think we've got a solid business case to make. And I think when Patrick gets done with all his work and brings that back in February, I think we will have the, the right approach, whatever that might be. We'll be a look at that, and we'll have a convincing business case and a convincing community value case to make for mitigating this risk and hopefully retiring it. My goal, if we can go to Mars by 2030, we should be able to retire our flood, our rainfall event flood mitigation by 2035. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? If so, Councilmember, if you would raise your virtual hand. Councilmember Henley, your virtual hand is still up. We will unmute you if you would like to make an additional comment. I'm just wondering if it's still up from your previous comment. Thank you. No comments? If so, you can raise your virtual hand, Councilmembers, and to be recognized. Mayor, I don't see anyone with their virtual hand raised at this, at this time.
Okay.
Excellent, okay. Just a moment. I'm sorry, Councilmember Moss has additional comment. If you would like to begin, thank you.
I apologize, I was thinking back to a point that Michael made, and I think it's a good one as we go back and look. Because you may remember all those red numbers on that one chart. And I don't know if that would bump the number up or it would switch around, but the model would tell us that. Some of those things were eliminating a backlog, where we have a current threat of not maintaining our leg. Oh, this is a chart, thank you very much. You can see those legacy issues, I'll call them legacy remediation. And then if you look over and see, I think that there's the life cycle of that thing where we're at, and if, and if the life cycle of the one-time investment to get us up to where we should have been is equal to the term of the debt, you could make a compelling argument, I think, that you would, you could responsibly and fiscally responsible, include them in a, in a borrowing thing only to correct years of, and I'll have to say it, we were negligent and not properly funding our own maintenance standards. And I think, I don't say that in a pejorative way, but it's just a fact. So maybe in this procedure, you could give that as a scenario and some consideration to look at that, so at least we would know what that means and what the tradeoff would be. And then we've made a conscious decision and, or how else to resource it. But I would like to have that as optional information to consider as we meet in February. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Wooton, if you'll pause two to three seconds before we begin your comments. Thank you.
Yes, very briefly, I'd just like to say, one of the, I guess, some of the feedback that I've heard from residents that I think is important to include is that they would like to see where funding, previous funding has been allocated in terms of projects and, and how that funding has impacted. I guess there are current situation, our current circumstances. Because if they can see a correlation between what's already been spit and the progress that has been made, I think it's important. And I think it will help the bond referendum process because it includes transparency and it builds that trust in government that suggests, you know, listen, this is what we've done with your money or the funding that we've collected. And this is how it's been used. And now we're asking for additional money to be productive in this area. So those are my comments as it relates to that process.
Thank you. Any additional comments from Councilmembers? If so, if you'd raise your virtual hand. Mayor, no one else has their hand raised at the moment.
That's great. I'll tell you what, we're going to start to bring things to a close here in a second. I think this was a remarkable discussion. We, we covered a tremendous amount of ground in four hours. But let me put it this way, we're not going to be meeting formally or informally or virtually for the next couple of weeks. So at this time, the manager and I would like to open up the floor for anybody to make any comment on any topic that they would as we prepare to close out a very challenging year. And then after we get through that, we will adjourn. So please chime in for any comments you would like to make. Open topic.
Councilmember Henley, if you would just pause two to three seconds before beginning.
Yes, I had sent an email to the mayor and vice mayor asking if we could talk about what process we're going to have going forward. It's my understanding, of course, that it was not, the governor's mandate for 10 people per gathering did not cover government because that is our option. It's, it's the city council's realm to decide what we're going to do. And I, I would like for us to discuss it somewhat because it not only affects, of course, our city council meetings if we're going to have a limit of 10 people, but also all of our boards and commissions and other meetings as well. I have two other meetings this week that we're kind of wondering, can there only be 10 people? I would prefer that, you know, the city council allow it to be done on the basis of if we feel comfortable that we are safe and everybody is able to wear their masks and socially distance, that if we have 12 or 13 or 14 people at a meeting, that it, it would be okay. If we're restricted to 10 people per meeting, I think going forward, like I say, it's going to affect not only our council meetings, but also all of our other boards and commissions and so forth. And so I would ask the council to kind of make that policy decision today. So going forward, everybody will know how to plan.
Okay, I think Mrs. Henley brings some cogent points to the table, and we can open it up for further discussion. The discussion that we had initially, especially, you know, considering that we've had several council members that were at risk. And, and once again, just being an example to the public about, you know, that, you know, we're taking this very, very, very seriously. But once again, we can be open. And, you know, we have some council folks that, you know, I personally prefer to meet together. But once again, we've had some other council people express concerns. But once again, as the city attorney pointed out, as long as we have six together, that's a possibility. But once again, as we stated, this is open for discussion.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I just need to let folks know. So the advertising for the January 5th meeting, for the planning portion of the meeting, has already been submitted.
Okay.
And I don't believe it can be revised at this, at this time. And that was submitted as a virtual meeting for January the 5th.
So we're going to have to do it at least on the 5th. And, you know, I guess going forward, you know, from there, we have to figure out what's going on. But you're going to have to advertise for the meetings.
That is correct. So we would need some direction at the end of this month, at the very latest, for the January, the second meeting. I think it's the 19th. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have my calendar open right in front of me, but I believe it's, that's the second meeting.
Let me ask, Jim Wood, do you think it would be prudent at this point? Yeah, we got a couple of weeks. If, you know, we can get in touch with the council members and get a temperature on what direction they may want to go after the first meeting in January?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I certainly sympathize with, with what everybody's saying. The only concern I have is when we talk about this, at bare minimum, we tend to have about 25 or 30 people in the room and council members. And I just, I, while we can socially distance, sometimes it's hard for the staff to do so. So I think we need to be cognizant of that. I also, though, I also agree that it's, it's difficult to do an effective back and forth in this manner. So I, I, I really don't have an answer. I guess, I guess just we need to probably have discussions with council members and see, see where they are on it. I just, I don't have a, a good answer for this.
If I could suggest at this point, you know, we got a couple of weeks that, you know, the vice mayor and I can, you know, talk individually to each council person because I think Mrs. Henley brings up a valid point. But there are also a number of other considerations. But we just want to make sure everybody's heard and that we're, you know, we can come to some form of consensus.
We do have several council members with their hand, their virtual hand raised. Councilmember Moss, if you would pause two to three seconds before we begin your comments. Thank you.
Well, my comment was going to be about our process relative, since our next retreat is in February and the budget's delivered by the city, I think by ordinance or the charter, I think it's ordinance, delivered the last part of, last week in March. I hope before February that there will be interim deliverables so that when we get to February, it's not the first time we're seeing it. And this is a continuous evolving thing. So in February, maybe we could be in a ratification process versus having discovery as we're having today. So that's, I would like to see a schedule of milestones and deliverables that gets us to that February retreat. So then we walk away from that. We still don't have things that the city manager needs to deliver a budget at the end of March. So specifically to Ms. Henley's question about other boards and commissions, you know, to the extent that those meetings are open to the public, I think we have to make sure that we can support those meetings and allow the public who wants to, who wants to observe or to observe those meetings, because there's some of the open meetings act and affordable, that we have the ability to support people who want to remotely observe those proceedings to maintain meaningful, real transparency. If we can do that, and other members are, what are the opportunity of those meetings to participate remotely, like many of them are doing in this meeting, then people who show up in person are free to take the risks that they want to take. But I don't want to create any indirect incentive or compulsion that people think that they're not doing their civic duty if they don't show up in person. And, and that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Councilmember Tower, if you'd pause two to three seconds before, before beginning. Thank you.
I would just add that we are in an upswing with this pandemic. We are in the mid, all of our numbers are getting worse. And to make a decision to go back to regular meetings, I think is premature. I think we need to take that into account. I'm hopeful that we will see a downturn. But I, for one, would vote to continue to try to have virtual meetings until we see at least some indication of a change in the moving, getting worse program that we have got adequate information to know that the situation is not improving.
Mr. Tower.
Councilmember Henley, your virtual hand is still up. We will unmute you if you have additional comments.
Sid, because I know of other meetings that are to occur this week. Is 10 a firm number? What is the council policy? Or do we have a firm number at this point?
City Attorney Rod Ingram is participating virtually via WebEx. Mr. Ingram, we have you unmuted.
Thank you. As pointed out earlier, the governor's executive order does have an exemption for the operation of local government for all aspects of the order, including the 10-person limit, all aspects except the mask mandate. So it's council's prerogative.
Councilmember Henley, we will unmute you again if you would like to follow up. Thank you.
Well, yes, but just as soon as, you know, I guess, for example, the, the Historical Review Board is, is meeting tomorrow. I told them that as liaison, I would stay home to keep the numbers down. But it's already advertised and, you know, so they're kind of wondering what to do. And then another meeting that we were planning about a particular CIP project that was going to have some public, it's really with the public. So just so that we know, if there's a council policy that we're limited to 10 people, then that will be the limit. But I just wanted to know if we do have a limit or not.
Mr. Ingram?
Council has adopted no policy. No limit. The limit of 10 people is in the governor's order with respect to other gatherings. But as I said before, there's an exemption for local government. So council has the discretion.
And if I could say, Mrs. Henley, at our last meeting, when we had a preliminary discussion on this, you know, before even, I believe, the mandate came down. discussion on this, you know, before even, I believe, the mandate came down, there were concerns from several councilpeople, you know, concerning health concerns and everything. So at least at this point, Mrs. Henley, I thought, we thought this would be at least a prudent way to approve, approach the workshop, rather than canceling it, because so many people, some folks wanted to make sure that we had this. But once again, I think going forward, we can think about it and talk to the other councilmembers and see if we can come up with a win-win situation.
Mayor, Councilmember Tower has his virtual hand raised. Mr. Tower, you are unmuted if you would like to begin.
I would just like, for the benefit of the group, to ask Rod if he knows from discussions with his counterparts in other cities, what, what's going on with council meetings in larger cities in the state.
Mr. Ingram, if you'd like to respond.
I'm afraid I haven't surveyed the other localities about the impact of the governor's order from last week. I can certainly look into that and report back to council.
Thank you. Councilmember Moss has his virtual hand raised as well. Mr. Moss, if you, if you'd pause two to three seconds before beginning, thank you.
I think that was a residual hand left up, but I'm in agreement that we should not be imposing risk, and to Mrs. Henley's question specifically, if we can possibly not have those meetings, I think we should.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Tower, your hand is still raised as well. I'm going to unmute you if you have additional questions or comments.
I do, thank you, Amanda. I just, one other thing for Rod. Rod, I was more interested generally even whether it's 25 or 10, it's just what's happening out there even with larger cities in terms of their meetings. I'd also point out that, and I think I said this to the vice mayor, that in terms of these meetings, I find the WebEx system to be clunky and, and awkward compared to some of the other platforms. But I wonder if there is not a way for citizens to be seen as well as be heard. I think we know each other and can communicate without having to see each other. We've seen each other enough to know what, what each other looks like and can probably read voices as well as faces. But I'm, I hope we could develop some process where if we're having, where citizens are allowed to participate remotely in meetings and not just by voice, but also to have their picture projected on the screens that we all have in front of us. I think it would greatly enhance the public participation and their sense of real participation in the meetings, and would also facilitate, you know, the process of recovering from this pandemic in a way, because we're going to continue to have to have these restrictions or similar ones for a good, good while until we reach some kind of herd immunity, which isn't going to happen anytime soon.
Yeah, with due respect, Mr. Tower, I think that, you know, I think it's a laudable thing. But once again, you know, you know, we're in, you know, uncharted waters right now, and, and part of the, you know, thing that we want to do is we have to, you know, control the, you know, the situations. And, you know, I think it would just further complicate things. And a lot of people may not have the capacity to be visual, so that kind of, you know, separates them. So I think if we're remarkably consistent with this, you know, because, you know, until recently, I didn't even have capacity to, I had to go use other people's computers. So once again, I think in, just in terms of uniformity, it may not be in our best interest.
Councilmember Tower, did you have any additional comments or questions? I still see your virtual hand raised. We will unmute you if so. Any other comments or questions from councilmembers? If so, if you will raise your virtual hand, so you'd be recognized. Mayor, no one has their virtual hand raised.
Oh, thank you. And I'll tell you what, I just want to thank the council and the staff. We all had a very challenging year plus, and I think we're all going to be grateful to looking at 2020 in the rearview mirror. But let's go forward with optimism and collegiality and unity together and make this great city of ours even greater. The manager and I are talking about, and I'm sure Mr. Moss will be happy, you know, strategy maps going forward that, you know, I think we're, the improvements that are going to be made over the short term are going to be ones that this council is going to be greatly satisfied with, and it's going to make us and put us into a situation where we're able to confront the multiple challenges that we have a lot better. So once again, I say thank you. Enjoy your families during the break. Enjoy the great season, and God bless you all, and thank you all for what you do. We are adjourned.